Work on the community that you're building. And we need to continue this, this tone to not only hold our residents accountable for what's acceptable behavior, but how we as council members, as public servants, every single one of us, how we also behave towards each other. And I also stand with Alder Haddon to say that it's not just one department that needs resources towards this end, but we also need support for the Commission for Human Relations and OEMC, who's going to be gathering this data. So I hope that all committees, including Public Safety and our Economic Development Committee is listening and hopefully we can move forward with this because I feel like this is the start of something really great. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to these items? Seeing no other hands. There's a motion on the floor for the roll call vote for these two items out of our Public Safety Committee. Madam, Madam Clerk, please take a roll call. Motion for both of them. I believe he did motion for both. Thank you. My apologies, it's just one item. My apologies. So, thank you. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call on the one item out of this committee.
The item is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your device. Hit refresh. Use your device. The voting is now open. I now will call for a voice vote if you have not used your e-device. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez. Not present in chambers. All right, that is it. The voting is now closed.
There are forty-nine yays, zero nays. This item passes. Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Since this was the first roll call today, I will make the motion to reconsider so we could use it throughout. But before I do that, I believe Alderwoman Silverstein did want the option to close if you can recognize her.
Sure, thank you. To close, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you again. And I did just want to thank all of my colleagues who supported this ordinance. This is a great moment for our city. I just wanted to take a moment to dedicate this ordinance in memory of my dear father, Marvin Lasco, who passed away just a little over a month ago. He, together with my mother, have always been my biggest supporter. He taught me to stand up for what is right, and I can't think of a more fitting tribute to his memory than legislation that will give a voice to the disenfranchised and render aid to those who need protection. I love you, my father. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. On the motion to reconsider, the chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Having voted on the prevailing side, I move to reconsider the vote by which ordinance number three, nine-three-two, was approved and ask for a leave to reverse the roll call.
Leave is granted. On the motion to reconsider, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
That's supposed to vote no.
All those who do not wish to reconsider signify by saying no.
No.
This motion has failed. Thank you very much. Here we go. Thank you. Anything else, Chairman?
Yes, two, two things. Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the remaining item, which was the Rule forty-five report in the Committee on Public Finance report by the previous successful motion and unsuccessful motion to reconsider with leave.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, this motion passes. Carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you.
You have another one. The chair recognizes Chairman Hopkins.
This concludes my report, but while I have the floor, if I may take just a very brief moment of personal privilege, we're talking about the topic of immigration today as if it were brand new, but actually the first immigrants that we know of to this area were three hundred and fifty years ago, ladies and gentlemen. Three hundred and fifty years ago, French migrants explored this area in their birchbar canoes. It is three hundred and fifty years since that moment in history. And to commemorate that, I have a resolution that I've introduced on the consent calendar, and we have members from the French Heritage Society here today to mark that historic journey of Pierre Marquette and Louise Joliette. They're in the gallery today, and I would simply ask that they rise and be recognized.
All right, so leave to recognize these individuals. They're in the, the upward chambers of the chamber. Let's please recognize these individuals by giving them a nice Chicago round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Chairman Laspada for pedestrian and traffic.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for your Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, for what's a meeting was held on Friday, December eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Before the committee, there were one hundred and six items. Two routine traffic items were held in committee and one hundred and three routine traffic items passed. We also passed O twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-six-two-one-zero, an ordinance amending Municipal Code Section nine dash four-eight dash zero-five-zero and associated Municipal Code provisions regarding requirements for intercity buses and penalties for non-compliance. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote from the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Seeing no hands, hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the Committee on Financing, the chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. Reporting for the City Council's Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, the following items received. They do pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is an ordinance concerning Amendment Number One to the Lincoln Avenue Tax Increment Finance Area Redevelopment Plan in the fortieth and fiftieth ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by, by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands, hear no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is an ordinance concerning Amendment Number Two to the Greater Southwest Industrial Corridor East Redevelopment Area Plan in the seventeenth and eighteenth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is an ordinance concerning an amended TIF redevelopment agreement with forty-three-hundred Roosevelt LLC for the construction project at forty-three-hundred West Roosevelt Road and forty-three-oh-one West Fifth Avenue in the twenty-fourth ward. Because, Mr. President, this is an historic moment for my colleague Alderman Monique Scott. She wishes to speak on this matter.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Chair, uh, Mr. President. This is not, this is in fact a monumental moment. This is the Roosevelt and Costner Innovation Center. This land has laid dormant my entire life. I've lived in my community for the fifty-two years, fifty-two, so I've been in my same community for fifty-two years. And this was a site that we called Mount Henry because construction would come, construction companies would come and dump on this site. And as of today, we still get some dumping, but because the work that I do, I make sure that I get it removed. But this is monumental because this is going to bring workforce development to Landale. This is going to bring over two hundred and fifty jobs to Landale. This is going to impact economic development in Landale. This will give us the face that we need in this ward to move a disenfranchised, disinvested community since nineteen sixty-eight. There has been nothing on Roosevelt Road since nineteen sixty-eight, when it was ravishly burned down from the MLK riots. I am proud. I am thankful that my colleagues supported this and made this happen. The administration made this happen. It couldn't have been done without the past and previous, past and present administration. So I thank you because this is a sixty-three million dollar project that came into fruition, and I am proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the breaking news of you being in the community for fifty-two years. No one knew that by the way you look. Very, very much. There we go. All right. Thank you very. Oh, the, the chair recognizes fifty-two years in the neighborhood, Alderwoman Scott.
So I could not be remiss if I did not give the former Alderman Michael Scott, Jr., who actually paved the way for this project, and we sealed the deal. So I appreciate him. He started this, and we finished it.
And how many years has he been in the neighborhood?
Forty-eight.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had no idea that she was a older sister. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Yeah, the chair recognizes Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez.
Just want to be recorded as a yes vote on the first roll call vote, please.
Please add Alderwoman Rosana Rodriguez Sanchez as a yes vote with the most favorable roll call. Thank you very much. And the motion again, Chairwoman?
Yes, item number four. Oh, I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Very good. Hearing no objections, seeing no other hands.
Item number four is an ordinance concerning multifamily housing revenue bonds and other financial assistance to New City Redevelopment Limited Partnership for the rehabilitation and development of United Yards One A at fifteen-fifteen West Forty-seventh Street and sixteen-thirty-five through sixteen-forty-three West Forty-seventh Street in the twentieth ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is an ordinance concerning a loan modification agreement with Revive Cressy Center for Housing and Healing at sixteen-sixty through sixteen-seventy-four West Ogden Avenue in the twenty-seventh ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Conway, who wishes to be recorded as voting no.
Okay. The chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Uh, yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. I had voted no in committee because there was a bit of a clerical issue that has been resolved, so I actually like to be recorded as a yes. Thank you very much.
I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items number six and seven consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and the denial of payments of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I move that these items be placed in the passage in, in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight is an order authorizing two applications for the City of Chicago charitable solicitation tag day permits for the nature conservancy and the American Civil Liberties Union. If there are no objections, I move passage of these items to be placed for passage in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number nine is the report of cases in which verdicts, judgments, and settlements were entered into for the month of November twenty-twenty-three. These items will be placed on file with our clerk.
Thank you.
Item number ten A is an order authorizing Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of James Mondo versus City of Chicago et al. in the amount of five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. I move passage of this item by the most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Public Safety and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number ten B is an order authorizing Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Garrett et al. versus City of Chicago in the amount of two million. I know, Mr. President, there are people who would like to speak to this. I reserve the right to close, and I'm asking for a roll call vote.
Very well. Are there any individuals that wish to speak to this particular item, this settlement? Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. This is a, this case is a close call. And I know that we have had settlement briefings on it three or four times, so I certainly won't belabor the facts on it. You may recall that police officers said a plaintiff pointed a gun at them. They indicated they were in imminent danger. Most of the bullets hit the, were generally to the front of the plaintiff. Semi-automatic handgun was required that was recovered at the scene. That most of you may know, a semi-automatic handgun means that multiple bullets can be fired with one trigger pull. IPR did clear the officers in this case. And, and just to not leave out anything, there was also testimony indicating an earlier encounter between officers and the plaintiff. My, my analysis and vote on this hasn't changed since, since July. I'm still a no, but I acknowledge this is a, a closed case, and no one can tell what a jury will do. Someone who spent seven years as a prosecutor here, I can tell you that I've seen juries do very unexpected things. Now there's, you know, we all have to think about our fiduciary duty here. Before we rejected this settlement by a vote of twenty-six, twenty-two in July, I was told the City Council hadn't rejected a settlement in over twelve years. Now, being a rubber stamp is not doing our fiduciary duty. And with that in mind, I certainly want to recognize the leadership of, of Chairwoman Dow, who is fostering an environment that creates, allows us a space for debate and democracy, and allows us to do our fiduciary duty. And I say that even though my vote has not changed. If you have done more homework and you have changed your vote and changed your mind, I applaud that. That is you doing your, your fiduciary duty. And one thing I, I will say is that since we initially rejected this settlement, we've seen an uptick in members of City Council coming to law settlement briefings, which I consider a win. And I hope that with that in mind, we, we continue to do our fiduciary duty on these cases going forward. So, thank you very much. Thank you much, very much, Chairwoman and Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members that wish to speak to this particular item? Seeing no other hands, chair recognizes again, Chairwoman Dow.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the words of my colleague, Alderman Vice Chair Conway. I think that this is a case that is not black and white, and is not clear that the city would actually win this case. And there are a lot of factors on both sides of the equation that would point in favor of a case and against the case for the city. So I think we are doing our fiduciary duties by spending as much as we have to on this case and so that we are not subjected to a judgment that might come back two, three, four times as much as we're being asked to spend today. So with that, Mr. President, I ask that we take a roll call vote.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor for a roll call vote for the settlement, the item, case number twenty-sixteen CV seventy-three nineteen. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device, hit refresh, and submit your vote. The voting is now open. I will now call on anyone that has not voted by voice vote. Alderman Burnett. Not in chambers. Alderwoman Cruz. Not in chambers. The voting is now closed. Oh, hold on. Stay by the bell. Alderman Burnett votes yes. I will have record you, Alderman Burnett. And the voting is now closed.
There are thirty-one yays, eighteen nays. This motion passes. The chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Item number ten C is an order authorizing Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Patrick Jenkins versus City of Chicago in the amount of eight million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I know that my colleague, Alderman Laspada, wishes to speak briefly to this matter.
Thank you. Before we move forward with this last item, we do need a motion to reconsider the last item that was just passed. Chairwoman Dow, an emotion to reconsider?
Yes, Mr. President. I make a motion that we can reconsider this ordinance or this vote.
On the motion to reconsider, signify if you wish to reconsider that last, passage of the last item, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say no. This motion fails. Again, chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow again on that final item.
Yes, I just read item number ten C, which is an order authorizing Corporation Counsel to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Patrick Jenkins versus City of Chicago in the amount of eight point seven-five million dollars. Alderman Laspada wishes to speak to this matter.
All right, the chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I wanted to speak to this not on the facts and evidence of the case because they are grim and tragic, and I believe the justice of this settlement is unimpeachable. I wanted to speak to this because this is our second police settlement related to domestic and gender-based violence in the past three months. And a fact that I want to add to the table is that Mr. Craig should be alive today. It profoundly saddens me that he's not with us. It speaks to deep-seated, deep-rooted challenges that this city has in addressing domestic and gender-based violence adequately. I speak to this because it reminds us that although predominantly this is an issue with victims or women, that is not always the case. I want to say to this that while I believe, for example, and I won't speak to this later, that our signing bonuses, our retention bonuses are well-deserved, and I will vote to that effect later, what we are spending next year on retention bonuses is more than double what we have ever spent in this city in gender-based violence on any given year. And that can never be right. And I will finally say that four years ago, I walked into this chamber and was told that whether it is a non-law enforcement model or co-responder model, that is how we should be engaging with victims of gender-based violence. I have been waiting four years for that, and I am hoping so deeply that that is something that comes to pass in twenty-twenty-four. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other individuals, members of this body, wish to speak to this item? Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow, a motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Workforce development, the chair recognizes Chairman Mike Rodriguez.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on Thursday, December seventh. There were three items on the agenda. The first item, an ordinance SO twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-five-eight-eight-three, an amendment of the Municipal Code Chapter six, one-thirty, regarding information requirements to employers of proposed civil action for alleged violations of the paid leave and paid sick and safe time ordinance. The substitute ordinance received a favorable vote in the Committee on Workforce Development, and I move passage of SO twenty-twenty-three zero-zero-zero-five-eight-eight-three by the first most favorable roll call of the Public Safety Committee.
And the subsequent motion to reconsider?
To reconsider, yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
The second item on the agenda is an ordinance O twenty-twenty-three zero-zero-zero-six-three-three-three, adopting agreed-upon changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the Fraternal Order of Police and the City of Chicago. The ordinance received a favorable vote in the Committee on Workforce Development, and I move for adoption of the ordinance by the first most favorable roll call of the committee. I think roll call was actually asked for, so, by roll call vote, sir.
Very good. Thank you very much. There's a motion for a roll call vote on the ordinance, item zero-two-zero-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-six-three-three-three. Sorry. There's a correction here, the item. This is an ordinance for item number zero-two-zero-twenty-three, which is zero-zero-zero-six-three-three-two. Madam Clerk, when you are ready, please take a roll call vote. Again, just for clarity, this is the changes to the collective bargaining agreement.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please refresh your device and hit submit. The voting is now open. I will now take a voice vote for those who have not submitted their, their vote. Alderman Robinson. Alderman Robinson is a yes. Alderman Ruth, Alderman Cruz is not in chambers. The voting is now closed.
There are forty-two yays, seven nays. This motion passes. On the motion to reconsider? On the motion to reconsider, the chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Move to reconsider the vote.
The motion to reconsider, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. This motion fails. The chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item to report is an ordinance implementing an arbitration option for CPD disciplinary actions in excess of three hundred and sixty-five days and separations. The item received a do-not-pass recommendation in committee. Our Rule forty-four provides that when a do-not-pass recommendation is made to the City Council, the item is automatically tabled unless a member successfully overrides the committee's recommendation by emotion and subsequent vote. Under the pertinent CBA, Collective Bargaining Agreement, the arbitration option will fail if it is affirmatively rejected by three-fifths of City Council. Accordingly, I move on the Rule forty-four to disapprove the committee's recommendation. I encourage a yes vote on my motion.
my motion to disapprove the committee's recommendation, which would place this item before City Council, and then a subsequent motion I will make will urge a no vote on the ordinance itself. And before we take votes on this, Mr. Chair, I reserve my right to close debate at the appropriate time.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. Are there any individuals that wish to speak this motion? Chair recognizes Alderwoman Tabarez.
I'd like to lay out three important facts that we learned in Workforce Committee, Workforce Development Committee last week. Three important facts. Number one, the Illinois Public Relations Act of nineteen eighty-four guarantees, guarantees Chicago police the right to arbitration in exchange for the right to strike. Number two, that same state law states any local ordinance that attempts to infringe on that right shall be considered illegal. And number three, the city's attorney admitted, they admitted that they are likely to be unsuccessful in court defending the blatant disregard the city has shown to the state law when it comes to how it treats Chicago police officers. Let me repeat. The state law already gives Chicago police officers the right to arbitration. Regardless, the city has been doing it wrong, disregarding the due process of police officers. The arbitration award makes it clear as day, and even our city attorneys know it's an open and shut case if this goes to court. My fellow colleagues, we therefore have two options. Option one, we as a council could vote to reject the ruling and defy the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act and be just like the right-wing activists that push right-to-work laws to infringe on the rights of public sector employees. We thereby kick off a chain of events which will lead to a court ruling in favor of arbitration anyway and open the floodgates to further litigation. These cases will last years and could cost the city hundreds of millions of dollars. Those are dollars.
Excuse me for a second. Please allow Alderwoman Tabarez to get through her presentation. Thank you.
Those are dollars that will go into the pockets of police officers who were rightfully suspended or terminated. None of us, I'm sure none of us, want public dollars to be awarded in court to bad cops as opposed to being used to fund mental health clinics or homeless services. Further, this option will also send a strong message to all other labor unions that we do not respect their legal rights. We do not respect their due process, and we are willing to break the law when it comes to infringing on the rights of their members when it is politically expedient. All the unions are watching today because they know it starts with one and will lead to more. Or we can choose option two. That option two is that the city and the union representing rank-and-file police officers have forged a historic contract. They have worked in good faith and participated in a process that was fair, with neither side walking away with everything that they wanted. We must acknowledge what the law says about police arbitration rights and pass this contract and continue to use the momentum to forge a path forward of collaboration between officers and the city, worker and employer. The union has put forward items to increase transparency in the arbitration process, acknowledging that no officer should be above the law, but neither should they be below it. We can seize on that offer or close the door. By passing this contract in its entirety, we are sending a message that we as a city know we can fix problems by bringing people to the table, not shutting them out. If we institute a police accountability process that is fair to community members and police officers as well as open and transparent, it can only be done as a collaborative effort. I know CPD, FOP, the CCPSA, and community members can get it done. Passage of this contract will start that process. Forcing the union to win in court, this incentivizes collaboration and will lead to the same results as those against arbitration are opposing. If those who make the law decide to break the law, to punish those who enforce the law, we do not deserve the right to make decisions running a government. Transparency and accountability will only be achieved through collaboration. We can achieve great things when everybody is at the table. That is the central belief. That is the foundation of collective bargaining. Let's pass this contract and show that we still believe that in Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. The chair recogn... All right. Thank you. Your expression has been heard. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make mine extremely short. I believe my colleague covered the topic eloquently into the best of anyone's ability. But what I'll cover is in the last nine years in these chambers, every time we go through a briefing for a settlement, the same sentiment comes out in these chambers, which is if this goes to court, it's going to end up costing us a lot more money in the end. So if you feel like paying for it, put your money where your mouth is, and you pay for it. Because this is going to go back to court. The FOP is going to push it, and what we're going to end up doing is we're going to end up costing the city a hell of a lot more money instead of just settling this right now. As well as putting our officers through this anguish as well. So you're going to get all angry. You're going to get mad. I wish that passion was there for the twenty-five thousand people shot in the city for the last five years. I wish that passion was there. I truly do. I wish it was. I wish people were fighting for those twenty-five thousand people that have been shot. I wish that passion was there for the almost five thousand homicides in the last five years. I wish we were fighting to make our civilians a little bit more connected with what's going on in our communities. Because we have a crime issue that is way out of hand right now. We need our officers on the street. We need their mental and their psychological abilities to be there to answer these calls, to answer the twenty-five thousand people shot. So
Please.
if we're going to end up putting our money where our mouth is and this comes back to us, and we're end up going back to court, and this is going to cost the city a hell of a lot more money, I think the last nine years of us bringing these terms up should be pursued right now. It's coming right back to us the same exact way. If you're in here today just to say no so that when it comes back, you could say you said no, but we worked it out and it didn't get there, so you'll be a yes the next time. It's not the way it has to be. It is not the way that it has to be. I don't think I could put it any better than my colleague put it. This needs to be settled. This needs to be finished right now. These officers gave up the right to strike. Their union gave up the right to strike in hopes that arbitration was the agreement given to them to settle their contracts. If you're in favor of labor, which the vast majority say you are, this is labor at its finest right now. This is a contract agreement. So I think you should make the right decision right now because if you give up on this arbitration right now, maybe they should be allowed to strike, or maybe the blue flu should happen. Something needs to happen to protect their rights. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Excuse me just for a second. Sergeant-at-Arms, listen, this is my warning. This is my warning. If you are disruptive, I'm going to ask the sergeant-at-arms to remove you from this gallery. Want to make sure that every thought is heard and expressed. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to pat on the back to everybody in the public gallery, second and third floor so far today. Because pat on the back. In general, in general, I'm feeling a lot better about our relationship today than I have for the last couple council meetings. So I'm glad folks are in here, and I appreciate folks following the rules and listening to our chair. And so let's keep it up, say that. I appreciate my colleagues' comments on the arbitration piece and understand the logic of what people are presenting. But if you're concerned about us spending hundreds of millions of dollars on a lawsuit, then maybe you would agree that we need to hold bad police officers accountable publicly. We just approved millions of dollars in lawsuits, and we do it every month. It is disgusting to sit in this body and to approve millions of dollars every month. And I'll say, before even running for office, I will never forget going to monthly police board hearings to get justice for Rakeya Boyd. You guys remember that? Public accountability for the highest misconduct violations is key to us having an honest and healthy relationship with our police department. We do have a strained relationship. FOP is a labor union. They're going to fight for the rights of their members, and we as government are going to fight for the rights of our citizens. We may have a disagreement on this, right? And also, there's no one right path, but this one is the wrong one. Obscuring what happens should not be in the best interest of your membership because it's not in the best interest of the city. If someone is at that threshold of having reasonable misconduct charges that could get them fired or suspended, we need to know about it. Because already, already, we have too many people and too many failed processes that don't let you process through people and get rid of them soon enough. Too many times, we have people with serious misconduct charges that are allowed to offend and offend, and it... Listen to the public. Don't you want people who support police officers? Don't you want people who feel good about those public safety officers when they show up in the neighborhood? It is really difficult, and I say this as a member of Chicago City Council, and nobody likes Aldermen. Nobody trusts Alderpeople. So I say this hot kettle. I'm just saying, right? Like, we want to raise accountability in this body. I know I do. I want higher standards, accountability, and transparency. I want City of Chicago residents to trust their elected representatives. I would love City of Chicago residents to trust our police officers, but we're not going to get it if you hide. If you hide the people who are doing wrong and you keep them out of public accountability. So I urge my colleagues, we can spend hundreds of millions of dollars challenging this, or we can spend hundreds of millions of dollars paying for bad police behavior. We're paying for it either way. I would prefer to pay for it with public accountability and work towards the city of Chicago that our residents deserve. So please vote no on the arbitration piece. It's worth the fight. It's worth the fight that people have spent decades fighting for, and to not support this is moving us backwards. What good is the police board? What good is the Community Safety and Public Accountability Board if you could do something so egregious that you have to hide, right? That you have to hide? There are already so many protections for our public employees, as there should be, because everyone should be given due process. But due process happens in the public. If you can't stand and face the public, you should not be in a public role. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sergeant-at-Arms.
Mr. President?
Just a second, Alderman. Just a second. As the Sergeant-at-Arms restores order in the upper gallery, I would ask this body to remain focused. I would ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to restore order in the upper gallery. Individuals continue to bang. We have to ask them to be removed. Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, some of those people need to be arrested like they arrested George Blakemore the other day for just having free speech. When you have people banging on walls and bringing on glass, those are the people that need to be arrested in this body. Oh. Mr. President?
Just a second. Alderman Beal, I would ask that the Sergeant-at-Arms, please restore order. Those who are disruptive, please remove them. Sergeant-at-Arms, please remove those who are being disruptive. Sergeant-at-Arms, please remove the individuals that are being disruptive, please, on both levels. Those who are banging on the windows, please remove them. Those that are shouting in this chamber, please remove them.
They arrested George Blakemore like they asked him.
As the Sergeant-at-Arms restores order, this body will stand in recess for the next ten minutes. this body will stand in recess for the next 10 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. The meeting will reconvene momentarily. Please take your seats, at this time, please take your seats. We appreciate your continued cooperation. Please take your seats. And remember, if you must talk, use your inside voices. Thank you. Please take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats, the meeting will convene momentarily. Please take your seats at this time. Please take your seats, the meeting will convene momentarily, please take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. The meeting will convene momentarily. Please have a seat, thank you. Thank you, the city council meeting will come back to the order. The Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, in my 24 years, we have never split a question on a contract such as this. I don't think anybody is 100% comfortable and likes any contract. But when we look at a contract that was negotiated, that was agreed upon through an arbitrator, sent to us to, for ratification. Nobody that's voting on this issue was in the room during negotiations. We don't negotiate contracts. We don't negotiate law settlements. But we ratify when they are brought before us. Now, I, trust me, I understand people's frustration not liking this arbitration piece. But when our own lawyers sat in that box and told us it will be an uphill battle, basically slim to none, that we will get this reversed. That's what he said. An uphill battle. So what's gonna happen if this is rejected, it's gonna be sent back to the arbitrator. The arbitrator's gonna tell us, "I said what I said." And it's gonna come back to us. If we vote against it, then it's gonna go to court and possibly cost us more and more and more and more. Now, the same people that are talking about we're concerned about spending money, well, this is another example that we're about to spend more money if we don't ratify this contract. Now, let me just say, nobody supports bad officers. Nobody supports bad officers. However, sometimes officers make mistakes, just like everybody else. And what we have to do is, we have to understand, put yourself in the police's shoes. When they're out there fighting to save lives, to make our community safe, sometimes they make split-second decisions that can cost them or other people their lives. Nobody in this position, in this body, is willing to put themselves in those shoes. But they do it day in and they do it day out. When there's a problem, you all call the police, don't you? Look around this body and look at all the police that are around. When something happens, we call the police. We're asking the police to clear the gallery, we're asking the police to make us feel safe here in this body. We're asking the police to patrol our communities. But yet, time and time again, y'all, we don't give the police the respect, the dignity, and the respect that they do every single day in our community. And again, let me just say, I'm not talking about the bad officers. But I'm talking about the 99.9% that are out there trying to make our community the better place. Those are the ones that we have to support. Those are the ones that we have to let them know that, you know what, we do have your back. Those are the ones that we have to support, you all. Because day in and day out, they're on the streets. They're doing the job that nobody else wants to do, they're called to do these jobs. Just like us, we're called to be legislators. But I just believe the police get a bad rap all the time for the job that they do. We have to support them, y'all. And when our own lawyers are telling us that we don't feel good about this, winning this, you know, sometimes we have to make tough decisions and we have to make decisions, which some of we all do all the time, we make decisions that we don't like. Well, think about it that way. Think about it as, this is just one of those that I may not like, but it's the right thing to do. So, I just wanna say, which I hope nobody is ever in this position, that you need to call the police and you say, you know what, call the arbitrator. Call the arbitrator before they come to your aid and assist that we need all the time. So, again, we don't have the right to reject this. It's an uphill battle. You all should just do the right thing and let's ratify this piece that should have never been broke out and it should have been voted in the last ordinance that we've voted on overwhelmingly in this body, and we should do the same thing with arbitration. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, the Chair recognizes. Thank you very much, the Chair recognizes Alderman Sixtia Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the city council. First and foremost, let me request of the council a moment of silence for the innocent victims of violence. Many here mourn the victims on Orange Streets. I expect that we all care about the violence that continue to be perpetrated on children and families. I, for one, find it atrocious what's happening in Gaza, but also what's happening in Orange Streets. So before I start my remarks, Chair, I would like to request a moment of silence for all the victims so that we honor and acknowledge the suffering in this room that is expressed in the frustration of residents. So I'll request just a moment of silence.
Motion of silence, moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think that what we have in front of us is very simple. And I think, and I will take on the word of some of my colleagues, to get it done today. We have two options, very simple in front of us. We either go and continue on the ride, on the route of lack of accountability, millions and millions of dollars, almost a billion dollars in the last decade on police misconduct cases. We either continue to allow a broken system to fear monger because are some of the same people talking about the issues of police accountability that object the settlements, the millionaire settlements, and the hypocrisy on all that? When that can be done, when we'll put better systems in place? That's what I would like to make sure that Chicago That's what I would like to make sure that Chicago has something that is remarkable, the resiliency of our community. And I will recognize Angelique Young, who is here with us in the audience. So thank you for being here. Because we do not forget. We do not forget some of these same comments that protect our residents, that demand accountability, that want to build trust. How do we build trust without accountability? How do we build a better system when we are now trying to take decisions away from the public? That is what is the option that we have in front of us. And let me tell you, because I think it's important to look at the numbers, even with the current system. And I'm grateful that today we have a civilian oversight commission where we have more oversight, more participation. And we are not going to back decades. I'm not talking about going backwards. This decision to put these kind of decisions outside the due process, behind scenes, are not going to build trust. If anything, are going to erode the real little that is left. And I hear the concerns and I hear the outrage that Israelis saw expressed in these chambers. So when it talks about the politics of old and the politics of new, I do think it's important to recognize that every single public servant must be held to the highest standard. What we're talking about here, and I will be clear to make sure that we dispel the fear mongering. We're talking about those cases when officers are suspended for over a year for serious misconduct, misconduct that should never belong to public service, misconduct that continue to allow white supremacist groups inside of the Chicago Police Department. And that must be addressed in the eyes of the public. That is the only way to start building some trust in a broken system. So today, in front of us, we have the ability to do right by Chicagoans who are demanding accountability. I hear everybody wanting to talk about trust. There will not be trust without accountability. And trust is built in the eyes of the public, for the public to see, for the police board that has been assigned for that, for the Chicago police commissioners who are empowered and voted to do that, and to have city council members that look at their fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we stop this broken system now, today, so that we have a system that actually protects our residents, no matter what the zip code is. We do not have that today. So, Mr. Chairman, I tell you that it is imperative that city council members understand and act with integrity, with facts, even right now, with the little accountability that we have. The, in the last five years or so, the 370 cases in front of the police board have been favorable even to the FOP appeals, 78%. So we want less accountability? Less accountability than that? I am for one, tired of coming in front of city council to pace police misconduct that should never occur to begin with. And today we have an opportunity to change those that. Lastly, I would like to say that it is imperative that we do not allow these same interests to divide us, to pitch us against each other, to pander in a time where we need to act as legislators. I propose that we follow indeed the legacy of Mayor Washington. To build a coalition in our communities, we have to be mindful of the history of repression and lack of accountability that we inherited. The time is today to settle that and build a new future for our children. And I tell you that today, the city council has the choice to listen to the same interests that are trying to divide us, the strike even the sanctuary city, the mayor of Washington, as a visionary implemented in 1985. We have a responsibility to protect our more, our most vulnerable. We have the opportunity to vote no on arbitration and build a better future with more accountability, where trust can be built. And finally, we have a responsibility, no matter where we see injustices, to make sure that we demand better. Today, in another shameful vision I saw, daughters, daughters in Gaza seeing how their father was born alive. That, and here, when we have a six-year Palestinian kid, stopped 26 times. I do think that we deserve better in the city of Chicago and we should be an example of justice. So that we say today also, for those who came here, solidarity locally, internationally. And we say to the, again, for those of us who fight for justice, cease fire now. Free Palestine. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The chair. The chair recognizes older woman Ruth Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. This might be a little too late, but I want to be recorded as a yes for item number three in workforce.
Yeah, the, the voting has been closed on that, older woman Cruz. Thank you. So my understanding is that you can submit a letter to the, to the clerk stating your case or your intentions. My apologies. Thank you. With that, the chair recognizes Alderman Jason Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I tell people this all the time, fair exchange i- is not robbery. But in some respects on this deal, I feel like my pocket's been picked. Talk about what is legal, what the process is. We're only here out of process. And process dictates either we accept or reject what is being brought before us. We talk about the law. We talk about everything else. Let's keep in mind, sometimes the law doesn't quite get it right. Slavery was the law of this land. Wasn't right. Separate but equal was the law of the land. Again, wasn't right. Women didn't have a right to vote. Hell, I didn't have a right to vote. Again, it wasn't right. While we are in this moment to deal with this matter, I think we have to, in some respects, recognize when this is not in the public interest. Again, as Alderman Tabarros has told us and laid out for us from what the state act says, there is precedent. I think the corporation council has given us some same ideas and ideology. But in this moment, this just is not right. And I think that we as a body have to make a decision on what we believe on behalf of our residents and our constituents to be what is right. And we believe that what is being put before us is not right or just. And again, if our rejection leads to additional back and forth, then so be it. It's not the first fight, won't be the last fight. But again, I, I think that in this case, and, and I'm not against the FOP. I'm not against their leadership, not against the police officers. However, we have to be for what the public is calling for and it's right for us to do or not to do. So while we may get marred in the back and forth of the conversation, I think that we have to land in a sense of what is right and what is just. And what's being put before us today is not right. It is not just for the constituents that we serve. And so it's in accordance with the chairman, I would ask that we all reject this and, and hopefully come back, get something better out of this conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes older woman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've gotten up here a lot of times to talk about my own personal struggles with what weighs on each of us as older people. This by far has been the hardest. I've thought long and hard. I'm still thinking as I stand here about what's been put before us. And I've got, I've got concerns. I had concerns about what we just said yes to and the, the fact that we didn't get that contract to review until the day of the, the committee hearing. I think we need to be able, as a body, to have as much information as possible to consider when we're looking at something as significant as a police contract. I've had conversations with constituents as well as members on both sides of the bargaining table. And I still have questions, right? And then, look, let me be clear. I do not want there to be a lack of transparency because I agree, we need that for trust. And the transition from a public process, from the police board to arbitration, does threaten to erode that trust between the community and the police. But trust is built one-on-one, too. It's built by the officers that are in our community, patrolling our streets, attending CAPS events, talking to our seniors, responding where they are. And I, look, I've heard lots of things in this room today about them not showing up or there's not trust there. The fact is, I live in a community where we feel like we need police very desperately. In the year 2022, beat 914 in the city of Chicago's in Chinatown, we had the highest level of robberies in the entire city of Chicago. And when people call the police, they want them to be there to respond. And we need to support them on that, which is why I was happy to vote yes on, on the contract, on, on the other piece of the, the contract. And we know how big an issue public safety is in this city and that there's a lot more that we need to do. And when I look at misconduct by some police officers and not having that be representative of everybody, I know that we have a lot of work to do all around. This is not something that's going to be solved by this contract alone either. That we even have to resort to arbitration in the first place for the very first time to settle our contract is pretty symbolic. And I think everything that we've done today around this contract has been precedent-setting. And that's not lost on me and the, the weight of it absolutely kind of makes me want to throw up right now. Because this is the decision that we have to make here. What I've gotten from all of the, the work that I've done in this process to make the determination on where I stand on the arbitration piece is that we are a labor city. The state statute is clear that there is the right to arbitration. That is not in question. And it also is true that I don't believe that arbitration as it exists today leads to any real public trust in the police officers, with the police, excuse me, and with this process. And I think the place that we should be focusing is on changing the state statute, changing the state laws that govern this. Laws are meant to be amended, folks. We can't look at everything that we're doing, set a law, and it's not a set it and forget it. This is not like a George Foreman girl. We have to keep going back and looking at where we need to make changes and tweaks. And for that reason, I'm going to be in support of the contract as it is today with the arbitration. And I will work fervently with my colleagues to make the changes that are necessary at the state level and throughout, and to continue to build trust. But we need to, we need to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes older woman Angela Clay. I'm sorry. I thought we had your end.
Other than happy holidays, man.
Very good. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes older woman Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think often we conflate narratives that are not interconnected and do not impact one another to instill fear and cause confusion. There is comments made on this floor today that one would wish that we care more about the thousands of young people who have died from gun violence in the city of Chicago. How many of us care about the violence that's happening in our communities and show up every day to build a more peaceful and safe community? We care. I think that when we worked through the budget cycle, we talked about doubling the money in violence prevention. We talked about mental health clinics. We talked about housing our folks so that violence is not an option for the residents of the city of Chicago. Look, gun violence has robbed some of our colleagues of siblings, me of a best friend, and hundreds of students. When I spent 10 years as a school administrator, can't tell you how many funerals I had to go to. We care about the violence that's happening in the city of Chicago. Voting no on arbitration doesn't mean the opposite. So let's not conflate narratives that do not relate to one another. Someone said on this floor that we hope that one would not have to dial 911 if we voted no on arbitration. Our ability to dial 911 and get first responder support has nothing to do with us voting no on arbitration. Let's not conflate narratives to instill fear and cause confusion. This arbitration vote is talking about holding the most egregious behavior, the most egregious, which by the way, by the way, would not impact the majority of the officers that are sworn. Let's not cause confusion or instill fear. This arbitration vote is talking about transparency. It's talking about restoring trust with our officers, something our officers also want. Our officers want to walk into our communities and not feel like the folks don't trust them, not feel like they're, they're not able to build relationships. This is a step in the right direction. It's something we should all want. So I want us to be careful that when we try to confuse our colleagues or instill fear or we repeat punchlines, the folks cave us. That we do it when it's factual and when it's relevant. And we don't just say things to say things. Because when I vote no today, I will still have the right to dial 911. When I vote no today, I still care about violence in my community. And I will vote no today while going back to my community and ensuring every young person that they're going to have a safe and alternative space so they don't have to think about robbing anybody. When I vote no today, I go back to my community and I restrategize about how are we going to take guns off of our streets? You see, my vote has nothing to do with the other. It is just about asking for transparency and holding the most egregious behavior accountable because that's what our people deserve. That is also what good police officers deserve. And we should all want that. And so let's not, let's not be fearful. Let's not allow folks to cause confusion. Let's not allow people to cause division. Because we must do what's right for our constituents. We must do what's right for the city of Chicago. And today, we are going to elevate all of the lives lost, both by officers and by guns that have been transported in our city. We deserve a safer city. And this is one way, just one, that we get that path in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's no secret to this body, I'm a proud Chicago police officer. But I'm also a prouder grandson of the union president, U.S. Steel, in 1970s. And my grandfather fought for worker rights every single time, every single day, at a time where it was more difficult. And that legacy is passed on through me. And that's what I see myself doing here today, is fighting for worker rights. I think about the police officers I worked midnights with in the fourth district, the fifth district, the sixth district, or the ones I see here today, guarding us, protecting us. I think about the things we've seen. Babies, children harmed, the mass shootings, car wrecks that have killed a mother and a father. Seeing all that, going into the station, doing paperwork, going to bed, waking up, and seeing the same things the next day. The toll it takes on us mentally, physically, many of us will never know. And the ability- And the ability, we can't go on strike, seeing all these things. We can't form a picket line and say enough is enough. We go to work every single day. So yes, I support this because I'm advocating for worker rights. Worker rights that we all in this body should be advocating for. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Taylor.
There's a saying that says, forward ever, backwards never. And we're, we love throwing around the word trust. Trust is a two-way street. Angelina Young trusted you all. Raquel Boyd trusted you all. Miracle Boy trusted you all, and their trust was betrayed. Our coworkers are quick to say they are nine bodies of accountability, but we're about to pay $11 million in lawsuits for bad behavior. Where is the trust and the protection for us? Now, I named these black women intentionally because I'm a black woman, and I want to be able to pick up the call and 911 and not be worried if you're going to shoot me because I'm black. Access to Pacquiao Jenkins, whose family we're about to pay $8 million to, that won't bring him back. We have all these levels of accountability, but every month you ask us to pay families money because of mistakes. And I ain't gonna, sometimes I don't think they're mistakes. I think they're intentional. Why, I agree that the police do, don't get their just doing, should be at the table when decisions about their jobs should be made. We're not going behind closed doors. We're still paying lawsuits for John Burge victims. Why? Why? Why does, when you look at what the police looks like now, there are not a lot of black police. Nobody wants to be the police. They don't. We are at a time where we gotta hold each other accountable. And going behind closed doors to decide fate ain't holding people accountable. The gentleman who hit Miracle Boy in her mouth, guess what? He retired, but he gonna get his pension. I asked this body a long time ago, should they have their own insurance? I was laughed at. I was ridiculed for asking the question because we continue to pay for bad behavior. Because that's what this is. And trust, I want to trust if I call 911, you're gonna come and do what I need you to do and not shoot and kill me. We were just in finance, and I was more confused than anybody sitting in here on why Mr. Jenkins called the police to say he was being stabbed, and within two minutes he was killed. Where is the accountability for his kids? Where is the counter, and we could throw around money all day long. Y'all love talking about, we gonna spend more money on arbitration? We spent $167,000 a month on rent for certain spaces. Come on, stop it. I am tired of y'all acting like the sky's falling when it ain't. It's when it's convenient for you all. At the end of the day, it is our responsibility to build trust among everybody. And don't get me wrong, I don't know who I'm calling when something happen. And by calling the boys on the block or the police, I don't know who I got a better chance with. And that's on y'all. That's on how we've been treated. We love, love, love talking about money. We throw away more money than any city council I've ever seen in the country. On BS, so stop it. I am not voting to have nothing behind no closed doors. This is not what the, this is not what the community asked us for due. And this wasn't just about black and brown people. You had white people talking about police brutality. So let's make it real around here. We gonna talk about it. Y'all, y'all irritating. Y'all, y'all really are. Because at the end of the day, y'all love, now y'all want to talk about workers' rights? We just, we just passed Fight 15. Stop it. We just made sure that tip workers got their fair share. Stop it. Just stop it. Enough is enough. Y'all wonder why the people come here on city council and act a fool? Because we acting a fool. I tell people every time when I come here, I'm going to the Universal Soul Soakers. Because this is clownness. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Wagisback.
Gee, thanks. I'll let it settle in for a second. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, today is, uh, today has been a bit of a difficult vote on both of these items. You know, the first thing, there were a lot of discussions going on between colleagues, and I see how there becomes a rift in between what people want to see in the first part of the contract and in the second part of the contract as well. And there's people on both sides of this issue that I think have made some very good points. One of the points that I think the better part of me wanted to see more of was transparency and accountability in the first part of this contract. As was already stated, this contract was put to the committee, and it was not transparent at all. It was not put out there to the public for them to see, for them to look at. But I think that we, we know that, you know, we're in a bind here. We have a, a position that the FOP staked out and a position that the city staked out. And our lawyers reopened the contract. They went back. You looked at it, and you decided that this was the contract that we should move forward on. And I think with the way things are going in this city and, and the fact that crime has been out of control in many places, we're not getting the assistance from the prosecutors and the, um, the judges who should be helping out as part of this three-legged stool of law enforcement, the judiciary, and the prosecutors working together to make this city safer, then we have to look at this contract as part of the way to move forward and at least one of those things. But as was also mentioned, splitting up these two things has not been done since the 1980s. And the 1980s is way back in the rearview mirror, so far back you can't see it. And I think that when we're looking at these kind of contracts, it behooves the administration to keep them together and negotiate from a stronger position if we're going to go in with any union, with this union or the ones who were also at the table before the Aldermen were. And that means staking out a position on the city side to make sure that we're not just saying, these are the kind of non-transparent labor contracts that we're going to see in the future. Now, yes, I did vote for it because I believe that the officers that have been doing the job the right way deserve it. They deserve to make sure they have a contract that they haven't had in many years, just like all of our other labor organizations are going to ask for. But we're abrogating our financial, financial duty, our fiduciary duty, when we don't have these contracts in front of us as a body, not just in the one committee, but days or weeks before, so we can really read through them. And part of that goes to the lack of a balanced budget that we're going to have next year. We barely got a budget that was balanced this year. And we heard it in the budget session at multiple points where we knew we're gonna, we know we're going to have to come back and find ways to pay for this contract and other ones that are on the table, along with the migrant issue and along with the other issues that are going to come forward in the next few months. And how are we going to get that money? There's only one way, ladies and gentlemen, and that's property tax hikes. Because we don't have a plan to go to Springfield to pass different revenue options. Springfield doesn't have an appetite for it. They've shown us that as well. So we better start thinking about how we're going to pay for these contracts as the time comes. I think my constituents on the arbitration part of this really pushed back. They had the explanation from me about the state law. I don't think they comprehend it in some cases, or they just don't want to think through the process of what it's going to take to push back on this. Alderwoman Tabarez brought up that it could cost hundreds of millions. Was that what you said? Well, I disagree with you on that. I think the saving grace on this item is that when it goes back to arbitration, regardless of what we say, and it goes to the circuit court, the city's probably going to lose on the first motion. So it probably won't cost hundreds of millions, but it'll cost us. Mr. President, I think, again, reopening the deal like this, splitting the baby, is the wrong way to go about it. Basically, what you've handed us is a half-eaten cake, and it's not the way to go forward on the future contracts. I think everybody here has been put in a very difficult position. We're going to say yes or no. And I think each one of us can live with the position that we take. But I think we're going to be back here in a short time, and we're going to be looking at, based on state law, as has been stated, we're going to be back in the same position that we were before. I'm going to vote no, but against the better part of my ideas on transparency and accountability, I'll stand on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to acknowledge something I think we all know to be true here. Regardless of where somebody stands on this vote, regardless of what debate they're having, all of us want a safer city. We want to not have the concerns that we all have on the ground. Each one of us has communications and relationships with our commanders. So as much as people want to turn up on one side or the other, we have a job to do. We make sure that we work with our police officers, and there is a role to make sure that we all make the city better. Um, I will agree with a number of points that our colleagues have stated. I, I want to give credit to Alderman Beal. We weren't at the negotiating table to see how it was negotiated, how things landed. Um, I think that is something we need to improve on as a body. We need to know before people go to the table what the city's goals are at the table. Because if we don't know what we're looking to improve, what we're looking to negotiate to gain, we don't know whether we won or lost. We're at the mercy of the lawyers to then talk to us at a briefing and frame everything as a win, even if it may not have been based on how you're going into the room. And I think that is a, something we need to improve under the council so we can have a better understanding on what we were trying to gain in these agreements and really have a better judgment on how we feel about where things ended up. Um, I, I also, um, share to Alderwoman Lee's point and Alderman Wagisback's point that there was a lack of transparency as it relates to the other part of the contract. And I think because there was so much focus on the arbitration piece, rightfully so, there were things that were not covered because we didn't receive, it wasn't introduced on this until it was a day it came to workforce committee, which led to groups that actually would do the work to check accountability, like Better Government Association, to actually be able to access the documents and point out what the concerns are. And because that wasn't done sooner, it wasn't until last night that we saw the article from Better Government Association highlighting concerns about the contract itself. Then when you're looking at body-worn cameras and their usage, there's things that lack even more accountability in this regular contract agreement that actually just got voted and passed. When it pertains to investigations by COPA that last longer than 18 months, those could be reversed or dismissed by an arbiter as well. That is in that first contract that we all passed through committee and, and kept moving here without the proper daylight to vet that. In talking to COPA to find out how many of those investigations are over 18 months, rather than get a specific number and it ballpark, 60% of the stuff that we're talking about is over 18 months, and an arbiter has the ability to then dismiss or reverse those decisions based on that contract alone. The fact that we didn't talk through some of that matter is a concern, but I, I do believe it to be a process that needs to be improved. There are so many things flying through this council and not the ability to really take the time to look at it that we find ourselves in positions to make difficult decisions. So we need to improve that for our, to our, do our job and responsibility to our constituents and the city and the public in their concerns about accountability in the contract and the arbitration. But let's move to our arbitration piece. I fully respect that there are labor laws and labor rights for every union. Arbitration is a right in those unions' negotiations. Uh, to Alderman Chico's point, CPD doesn't get the opportunity or right to strike. They don't. Because safety is paramount, and they're not given that ability. There are things where we should be supporting the officers as it relates to their own mental health support that the city does not do well, that we learned last term that after an officer has 10 sessions with a therapist, they have to prove that they need more. You tell me a job where you don't need to prove that you need more, it is CPD because of what they have to face every single day. We have to improve that. But when we talk about all the different labor unions, there's a fundamental difference between every union and the FOP, respectfully. And, and it isn't about hate or love or how we view. It is fundamental to the role itself. A plumber doesn't have the ability to arrest anybody. A pipe fitter doesn't have the ability to shoot anyone, right? These things that are enshrined as part of the role are fundamentally different than every other union. So when we talk about changes, I also would agree with Alderwoman Lee. We need to talk at the state and at Springfield about changing those laws because that is really where some of this needs to be sorted out, whereas the city facing the rest of it. Now, to Alderwoman, Alderperson Fuentes' point, the amount of officers we're talking about that would be suspended 365 days or separated is less than 1% of the officers in CPD. The vast majority of officers risk their lives. They take on the job because they care. They want to make their city better. And they should be applauded and commended for taking on that risk and doing that work. We are talking about less than 1% of those officers who shouldn't be officers to begin with. And so, when we talk about trust between CPD and the public and vice versa, you know what I've never heard? I've never heard an officer say, that person shouldn't be a cop. I've never heard that. No matter what the, what the misconduct settlement, what the issue, what the details of the matter is, I've never heard an officer say, that one right there does not represent us and shouldn't be an officer. That would help instill trust. And so I'm, I'm just saying, we need to hear more of that so we can build that bridge because we have to work together. Now, as it relates to a police board, we want those conversations to be made public. And here's why. It's not to villainize any. Officers have to make very difficult and nuanced calls in situations none of us would ever want to be in or even watch in a simulation. They have to make tough calls every single day. These are matters that involve nuance and involve understanding. So even to the, to the benefit of FOP and the CPD, we should hear it publicly because there are times where officers are making the right call that we need to know the details to have a better understanding on the other side of the equation. Not having a public transparent process limits that, so we don't have an understanding about the tough calls they have to make and make every single day in and out. I think lastly, I'll say to President Katanzara's credit, last night emailed members of the council to say, you know, when we were talking about negotiations, we offered a different arbitration process or offered to be open to this. The administration said no. I understand why they would say no because the stance is we want a police board which would be gutted to non-existence if we move this way, so we're not having that. So I responded to President Katanzara. If, if you're saying this, and we all know this might cost everything to go to court, would you then be open to renegotiating, figuring out what that looks like? He said, you know what? That's already been settled. Let's figure out the vote. That is why we are all put in a difficult decision now. Looking at the arbitration, to other people's point, we take on a bunch of these cases when it comes to these settlements or when it comes to misconduct, where our members go, take that case on. It's going to cost us, so what? Let's take it on. We pay so much in misconduct, $100 million every year average on misconduct. So yes, I believe we need to take it on. I will be voting to also reject the arbitration, not because I am trying to look and love or hate the police, but because it's the right matter to have transparency and accountability to understand the decisions, how difficult they are, and to actually build the kind of trust we need to have a functioning public safety system. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I get started with my full comments, I want to, and I don't want to be long. I just want people to pay attention to what both Alderman Wagisback said and what Alderman Lee said. I had to just go back and just erase some of my things because there's no need to repeat and just stay repetitive. And listen to what they said, and those two, those things that they said are very critical. And so, the state definitely has a responsibility here. The other part is that police do always recognize that police do have powers and responsibilities that other workers don't that put us in both life and death situations. The other part of this is in saying that we shouldn't be here. There are people at the table that's smarter than all of us when it comes to arbitration. You have accountants here, you have teachers here, but you don't have experts here on arbitration. This, sometimes you just got to stand at room and work it out and fight it out. And, and that's, I think that's what should have happened. But since that didn't happen, now we're here, and it's brought to us where we have to make. now we're here and it's brought to us where we have to make, um, a tough choice. And when I get into tough choices like this, and I'm not a subject matter expert, one thing I do is I reach out to subject matter experts and I reach out to people that it impacts. With that, let me say this. A lot of people are missing a lot on this or are scared to talk about it, and that's the black and white issue. That's the bottom line. That's what this all boils down to. A black and white issue. And, and part of that is becoming is a trust amongst the people that are policed and the people that do the policing. And part of that is not so much all the time just those individuals, but leadership. People look at the leadership of the FOP, and then there's people that's not comfortable with that because they say they feel they're not represented, including rank and file members. People look at the arbitrators. I think there's five of them. I think I know four out of five are white. I don't know about the fifth one. I don't know. Somebody can clarify that. And then that becomes that trust factor. And so when people are, when we're starting at a level of when things deal with race, you have to understand that, and you have to deal with that. And so as I have to represent the 17th Ward constituents, I go talk to them. I go talk to subject matter experts, and I go talk to the rank and file. Now, let me be honest here. Of the rank and file that I spoke to, I think I spoke to three white, majority black. You can say that's fair and unfair, however you want to look at it. But it's the people that I represent. They say, "David, we need transparency." I'm not making this up. If they would have told me the other way, I'd be, I'd be voting the other way. Those subject matter experts would have told me the other way, I would have voted the other way. But I'll start, I'll start with what I said at the beginning. This shouldn't have got to us in the first place. You got to stand in there and fight. But now that it's with us, now you put us in a position to make, and it is a tough decision. But that tough decision is based on race. Also, let me tell you about arbitration and the arbitrators that, um, some of the arbitrators that are there and the positions that you got to take. Arbitrators got to, and a lot of times use what? Historical context based on decisions. They go look at and say, "Hey, we didn't fire Joe Blow 10 years ago because of that. And so why should we be firing him today? We got to stay consistent." Well, if you look at back in, I think in 1992, somebody didn't get fired for going up the side ahead of Rodney King. Should that person do the same thing today and not get fired because of precedent? But that's what arbitrators do. They look at historical context. And so you all have to really, really look at this in both black and white and in the people who are doing it. And at, and anytime we're at this position where we got to make a decision, when we have to make a decision, transparency is always best. Transparency is always best. And like I said, go back, listen to Alderman Wagisback's speech. It's a tough decision. We got to lean to transparency, but at the end of the day, you got to stick it through and fight these things through. I wish it wasn't separated out. So you all end up where you all end up at, but when you put it at our doorstep, then we got to make those decisions based some on emotion, some based on flash and dash. What I did, I based it on what I feel are factual, um, information from subject matter experts and also talking to the men and women that impact. And so I'll be voting, um, um, no on this, and, um, I'll encourage my colleagues to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Good afternoon, Chairman.
Good afternoon.
I stand here, um, as the grandson of a union leader, son of a police officer, um, and a former union organizer. I believe in unions. I'm a trade unionist, right? Uh, oftentimes the argument against unions say that, uh, unions protect bad workers. And I think that this arbitration award does just that. You know, not all police officers will be affected by this, only the ones who do the worst and have done the worst to erode public trust. Uh, my colleague talked about the 1980s being in the rearview mirror. Uh, 1980s was the first time I had, eh, contact with a police officer I feel was unjust. I'm still affected by it. A senior, senior in high school and, you know, I'm not a senior in high school anymore. I'm almost a senior citizen. And, you know, the, we talked, John Burge's name has been brought up a couple of times in this room, and, you know, John Burge also happened in the 80s. If you've ever had an opportunity to speak with a John Burge victim, they would also tell you that the 80s is not in the rearview. So, you know, we all deserve a public safety system that supports all of us, keeps all of us safe, including POs, police officers, and civilians. And bad cops have destroyed public trust and have contributed to the lack of safety in the city. It makes all of us unsafe. It makes our officers unsafe too because the tension that exists in the community between the police and, and, and the community residents aren't because of the majority of police officers who are serving honorably, protecting our community and doing the right thing. It's because of those few. The few who have sought to do harm in our communities with malice and with judgment. And so we've got a moment here. I understand there's a lot about precedent, but, you know, there's a point that was made by a couple of my colleagues about how precedent, um, and law have not always served the public body in the right way. And so I stand here to vote no for the arbitration award. But more importantly, I think it's important that as we look at the role of this body, uh, particularly as it exists today, that we have an opportunity to work and fight, not just the folks who have been elected in this chamber, but the people who sit in the gallery, to work and fight to make sure that we are creating this public safety system that keeps us all safe. You know, it's my work that created the Community Commission on Public Safety and Accountability that I did before I got here. And so I'm going to ask to make sure that the community also continues to keep the pressure on as we're looking to make sure that we are all safe, civilians and police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. Believe it or not, I didn't plan on speaking, but since we're starting off at moment of silence, if we can have a moment of silence for Israelis that were murdered, raped, and tortured or are still hostages and for an end to this conflict, I'd appreciate that.
Let's take a moment of silence.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm not going to change anybody. Nobody in here is going to change anybody. I just want to start off by saying I, I, I respect and appreciate everybody. And I, I don't usually like to call people out by name, but I, I consider her a friend, and that's you, Jeanette. Jeanette Taylor and me are about as opposite as opposite could be. But I, I believe she has a true liking for me as I do for her, so, uh, we certainly respect each other. She's way, way on one way, I'm way another way, but I really love you, Jeanette, so if, if I can say that. Is that okay? Say I love you?
You've already said it, so. Thank you. But thank you for addressing me, expressing your love for your colleague. You are within the rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So once again, I know everybody said this about the, you know, I'm, I'm also looking, where's all the pro-labor people? You know, we're fighting for workers' rights. Um, I don't think we're conflating anything wrong about this or whatever, but I stand up for labor rights. Uh, all labor, this could be, this could open a floodgates for labor to lose possibly. I don't know. I mean, like you say, a lot of times arbitrators, people look at things, what happened in the past, I don't know. Um, we certainly were told by our council that this is a very steep hill to climb, very unlikely we could win this. I'm not an attorney. I know we have a few attorneys in here. I don't know where the attorneys are voting. Um, I know it's a difficult task. I did do my research. I did talk to some labor attorneys about this. Um, I don't think we could win. Bottom line is if you and me can't agree about something, Mr. President, we go to an arbitrator, what he decides, that's the law, so. Um, and once again, the fiduciary responsibility. I just wish, and I know my one colleague said, and I've been going to the briefings, police settlement briefings, it's not just police people, so everybody keeps saying it's police settlement briefings. It's not. So, um, I, I certainly wish more people would go. Certainly more ever go now than I've seen ever, so. Um, we got to be up to about 20 people now going to the settlement briefing, so. I'd like to see us get up to the 40 to 45, so let's all try to, been made pretty easy from Corporations Council. So thank you Corp Council on that. So let's try to do that. I understand the political votes here for people. I'm not going to change anybody. You're not going to change me. You're not going to change me. I, I didn't change you. We, I, I understand, you know, so just people want to have their say, so I appreciate people having their say. But there's one thing that really bothered me that I just want to bring up since we're, well, I, I, I also would like to see everybody take the shoe down shoe class because nobody understands what a split to sex, split second decision is like with the exception of maybe Chico and Apolitano, um, and, um, and Telefero. I, we, a gardener and myself understand split to sections as fire, split second decisions as firemen, but it's kind of a different thing. It's a life, life and death matter situation, but there's one comment that I'm not going to mention any names or anything, but in committee that police were called out as murderers and so on and so forth. But I just want to bring a few names to people to wrap up with a few names that maybe people have forgotten about, okay? Maybe you forgot because maybe you didn't go to the wake or the funeral. Maybe you forgot it on purpose, but I'm going to mention names and hopefully FOP's not mad at me about this, but we're going to mention some of these bad police officers, and that's Ella French, Ariana Preston. If you go, I could look them up. Paul Bauer, Michael Flisk, Thor Soderberg, Thomas Wertham, Clifton Lewis, Brian Strauss, Michael Sirioli, Andres Vasquez Lasso, Sam Jimenez. And then of course, I can't forget my grandfather, Anthony Canata, who was killed about a couple of days before my mother's graduation in 19, high grammar school graduation in 1953. I certainly don't want to fit you, grandpa, so I hope you're up there and I hope you're listening. Uh, and lastly, yeah, lastly, we have an officer here today. I believe he's here. I hope he could stand up. This guy made the ultimate sacrifice, Carlos Yanez. Carlos, I don't know if you're here today or not. Wow, thank you, everybody. I wasn't expecting that, and thank you. That was real nice. Um, but I can't imagine what Carlos goes through day after day, uh, wondering why it wasn't him and Ella live, or he'll never be the same. He'll never live a normal life with his family's going through day in and day out, making the ultimate sacrifice. I, I had some fire brothers that can, were never able to go back to work because of what happened to them in fires. But Carlos, thank you. Thank everybody. Like I say, once again, my prediction is it's going to be 32 to 33 against the arbitration. I think it's a big mistake, so I know I'm not going to change you. None of you are going to change me, but I do respect you. I do, uh, respect what you had to say. But obviously, I will be supporting the arbitrator's decision. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recogn- Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the City Council. Uh, before I begin, I need to correct one inaccuracy from the, from my colleague from the 11th Ward. It was not George Foreman. It was Ron Popeal who said it and forget it with his Showtime food dehydrator. But to this item, sir, colleagues, let me just say that the level of hypocrisy coming out of this room today has reached an all-time high. It has become an Olympic-level event. Listening to each and every one of you who are sitting here right now saying we need to challenge the courts even though we know we're going to lose. How many times have I stood right here trying to fight to protect taxpayer dollars from going to gangbanger families, terrorizing neighborhoods? And every single one of you who said the same thing have stood in this room saying, "No, we have to do it. It's our responsibility. It's our duty to pay these settlements." Even when we know that, as we just saw, we approved a settlement where Impra said our police were in the right. We are cutting our losses at every turn because we don't want to fight. But now all of a sudden, the chamber has grown a set. Now all of a sudden, this body is willing to completely reject the fact that not just the FOP, but that the pipe fitters, ATU, ATU, IBW 134, Local 150, the plumbers, firefighters, local two, and the Teamsters all support this effort not to separate this contract because they know what that will mean for them down the road. But we also know, Mr. President, is that all of these calls for public accountability are not for transparency, but they're to continue the agenda of political assassination of our police department by individuals who are committed to not reforming the police department but abolishing it. We talk about we need to bring light to the most egregious behavior. That people with such power and authority over our lives need to be held accountable by the public eye. You know, what's interesting is that while we talk about less than 1% of our officers would be impacted, there's another group with collective bargaining rights that has an inordinate amount of control over our lives. It impacts our children, and it's the CTU. And as I look, as I look, Mr. President, right here, CTU's contract, I can go through the grievance and arbitration procedure, and I guarantee you it is not the same, even though the annual inspector general's report highlights the fact that especially 30 pages, 30 out of nearly 112 pages deal with sexually inappropriate behavior by people covered by a collective bargaining agreement. 2022, 1,800 reported cases, of which 725 were investigated by the Inspector General's Office of Sexual Allegations. But I don't hear a single call for public oversight or accountability. We talk about lawsuits. I've got pages and pages of CPS lawsuits.
Just a second. Please continue, Alderman.
Pages and pages of CPS lawsuits. But we're not talking about that. We're not talking about public accountability or transparency therein. Why? Because the agenda is not the same. But their impact is no less felt on our communities. Because if you're not concerned, ladies and gentlemen, about 1,800 children being preyed upon by their teachers, worrying about less than 1% should not be the same. Now you can boo all you want, ladies and gentlemen, but I'm here to tell you this. This is about what is right in this room. This is about what I've heard time and time again from my colleagues who say everyone's entitled to their opinion, but they're not entitled to their own facts. And the facts is very simple. We have a responsibility to pass what was agreed upon and not separate it. We have a responsibility to show that we can lead this city. Because I will tell you this, Mr. President. I personally believe that all of the calls for public access and accountability are misguided. They're misguided, misguided, excuse me, because this very body approved a mechanism from which the public could have oversight over the police department. The anger about that is because those individuals who were elected at the district level, who were parts, to be a part of the, uh, commission and all of that have not been a part of the process of which the ordinance was designed. An ordinance, by the way, I voted for, and now question why. This level of political doublespeak would make Orwell proud today. It is very clear what we need to do in this body. But the narrative, the performance, and the politics of it won't allow many of you to do that. Because we're picking and choosing the winners we want for the agendas we have. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a blue collar kid. But I know, having been raised on the southwest side, southwest side, how to call a spade a spade. And what we're doing here is not right, it's hypocritical of everything that all of you have talked about, when you argue against what we talk about settlements and things of that nature, and it's not coming from a place of truth, it's not coming from a place of reason, it's political, it's ambitious, and it's wrong. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. See you no other hands. Thank you. See you no other hands. The chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
So here's why I will be urging this body to reject the ordinance that contains the arbitration option. The city's chief labor negotiator has stated that this award, which gives officers a choice between arbitration and the police board, is not justified by the record or the party's history, is likely to frustrate the city's effort to bring about fundamental and necessary reforms to the police department. This will take away the public's confidence in disciplinary process applicable to police officers, will ultimately work to the detriment of police officers covered by their CBA, and at bottom, is inconsistent with the interests and welfare of the public, which is required by the Illinois Public Labor Relations Act. Please note, this is not so much a question of arbitration versus the police board, this is the specific manner in which the arbitrator framed the choice between the two forums. The city proposed and the arbitrator rejected an arbitration option that would be open to the public, in the same way the police board hearings are open to the public. That would ensure that arbitrators possess the necessary familiarity with the consent decree and policies specific to the CPD, such as use of force policies. And that would be in line with the manner in which the city handles discharge, appeal, arbitration for other union represented employees. I'll close with one key point. City of Chicago has an obvious demonstrable need for a disciplinary appeal process in which the residents of Chicago, who are the fundamental stakeholders, can be confident that the ultimate results of a disciplinary appeal is justified by the evidence and is consistent with our insistence upon transparency of our policies and procedures relating to the police department. I now renew my motion for a voice vote to disapprove the committee report, which I have noted will place the ordinance before the city council. I am urging you to vote yes on this motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor, to be clear, there's a vote, a motion on the floor for this report, this committee report, uh, to be brought before, um, this body, um, so that, um, a, a full vote could be made on this particular portion of the contract. So a yes vote, um, allows this particular portion of the contract to be voted before this body. A no vote results in this item being tabled in committee. So a yes vote allows us to take up this particular portion, a no of the contract, a no vote places this item tabled in committee. There's a motion on the floor for a voice vote, I just heard, there's a motion on the floor for a roll call, Madam Clerk.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open, please refresh your device, the voting is now open. Please raise your hand if you need assistance. I will now take a voice vote for those who did not, um, cast their votes. Alderman Chico. Alderman Chico is a nay, no. Alderwoman Lee. Alderwoman Lee is a no. Alderman Curtis. Alderman Curtis is a no. Alderman Tabar, Alderwoman Tabaros. Alderwoman Tabaros is a no. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Spisato is a no. Alderwoman Nugent. Alderwoman Nugent is a no. Alderman Napolitano. Alderman Napolitano is a no. Alderman Gardner. Alderman Gardner is a no. Alderwoman Silverstein. Alderwoman Silverstein is a no. The voting is now closed.
There are thirty-four yays, there are sixteen nays, this motion passes. The chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now call for a roll call vote on the ordinance that provides for a closed room arbitration option for certain CPD disciplinary actions, and I am urging a no vote on this matter.
Thank you very much. Just to be clear, a no vote is a vote to reject this ordinance that includes the arbitration provision of the contract to establish a closed room arbitration option for certain CPD disciplinary actions. A yes vote is a vote to accept the arbitration award. Just as a note, a three-fifth vote to reject this ordinance is required to reject the matter. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open, please use your e-device, hit refresh, and submit your vote. If you need help, please raise your hand. I will now call a voice vote if you have not voted. Alderman Chico. Alderman Chico is a yes. Alderman Spisato. Alderman Spisato is a yes. Alderman Napolitano. Napolitano is a yes. Alderman Gardner. Gardner is a yes. All right, the voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are thirty-three, there are thirty-three nays, there are seventeen yays, this motion fails. Uh, Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider. I'm sorry, yes, Alderman Mitchell on the motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, move to reconsider the vote.
On the motion to reconsider, all those in favor to reconsider this vote signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Motion fails. Thank you very much. Um, Alderman Rodriguez. The chair recognizes Chairman Rodriguez.
Mr. President, this concludes the report of the Committee on Workforce Development.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes- At this point, we're now going to take up resolutions. Thank you for being patient. Uh, there are a number of resolutions that we wish to address today, and those who are being honored and recognized today have been incredibly patient, we do appreciate that. Um, we have three resolutions today celebrating the fortieth anniversary of the Chicago Gay Men's Chorus. The twentieth anniversary of the Chicago Dragons Rugby Football Club, and HIV AIDS Awareness Month. Chair recognizes, just a second, just a second. Uh, there's a meeting still going on, as those of you who are exiting, please exit with some decorum and, and quieter, please. Those of you who are exiting, please exit a little quieter, please. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes, just, just a second. Those of you who are exiting, could you please exit quicker and a little quieter, please? I would ask the city council members to please come back to order. If you wish to celebrate individuals, could you just hold off for a second so that the order of business can continue? Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, I move for the temporary suspension of the rules for the immediate consideration of these resolutions.
There's a motion on the floor to temporarily suspend the rules so that we can take up these resolution, resolutions. All those in favor of the suspension of the rules signify by saying aye. All those opposed say nay. Any of the chair, the ayes have it. Thank you, no objections, so ordered in the interest of time. Um, we will forego the reading of these resolutions and go straight to comments. Um, the first resolution, again, celebrating the fortieth anniversary of the Chicago Gay Men's Chorus. Are there any members that wish to speak to this resolution? Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I rise to congratulate, uh, the Gay Men's Chorus, which is more than just gay men, uh, for forty years of excellent service, uh, representing the North Halsted community. I have the opportunity to see the chorus a lot, uh, and I hope most of you do too, but I, I feel like they have since taken up residency at Gallagher Way on Wrigley Field. Um, they've become regulars there, regulars at the ballpark, um, and have really gone a long way in, uh, helping communities all across Chicago, understanding communities like mine, uh, and to bring joy and a little fun, certainly a little sparkle, uh, wherever they go, and so I'm happy to be here to support this, congrats on forty years.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Knutson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also rise in support, um, sorry we made you all wait so long, I, I'm sure it's busy season two with performances, um, uh, thank you for the work you do, I mean, the arts across the board can be the most incredible place for acceptance, for self-realization, and I know all of you resonate with that. Um, I'd love to have you come perform in the forty-third ward, um, and again, just congratulations.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Manal Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of this resolution, I'm so happy to see you. Today's been a really tough day, and, um, we just want to thank you for all your work, you know, you're, you have touched so many lives, um, your history is, is really grounded in community, and, uh, when you all started, um, some of your members couldn't even say that you were a part of the chorus because of discrimination and, you know, um, the fear from getting fired, and you, your group also came to, um, many of our wards, including in Edgewater, uh, the former, um, alderwoman Kathy Ostrom, and, you know, um, and she's since passed because of, um, cancer, but you were, you were there to serenade her, so you have been there, um, through the AIDS epidemic, when people have been dying, and, um, you have brought so much solace for people, and you bring it to us today in city council, so I stand to, um, celebrate you and thank you for your work, and we can't wait to, um, continue, um, doing the thing of, of shining a light on Chicago as, um, as the center of the arts, because institutions like yours and your inclusivity, um, means a lot to us, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Oh, my apologies. The chair recognizes Alder Omenhatten.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I can't be more eloquent than, uh, Alderwoman Manal Hoppinworth, but I will say happy anniversary, and, um, I'm particularly in the day where we got too past, uh, Alderwoman Silverstein's Shy versus Hate Ordinance, as we've talked about, the rise in hate crimes and hate incidents that we've seen, um, I just really appreciate the chorus and continuing to show up for representation, and, um, I think everyone else said it very well, and just kind of bringing light, levity, and creating spaces, um, that we still, uh, very desperately need, so thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone else? Any other alders wish to speak to this resolution? Let me just thank the individuals who are here today in the box, um, as a, as a city, um, you know, it's a remarkable testament, um, to who we are, to not just, you know, recognize the incredible contributions, um, that you all have made to the city, but really the contributions that this city has made to the entire country, uh, particularly as we, um, work to make sure that our rights are protected, and that everyone is, is seen and heard and valued. And so from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of the city of Chicago, celebrate not just this particularly milestone, but we celebrate the work that you will continue to do on behalf of all of the people of Chicago. Thank you very much. Will you please give them a nice warm round of applause? Uh, now for the twentieth anniversary of the Chicago Dragons Rugby Football Club. I'm sorry, did we lose the rest of the team? Well, thank you for being so patient with us today, and, um, are there any alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm honored to rise in support of this resolution. Thank you for being here, and thank you for, uh, your patience today. Um, more than ten years ago, I was the regular bartender for the Chicago Dragons. Um, and, uh, if you've ever been to a post-match drink up, you have some idea of what I went through with these guys. Um, but, uh, it was amazing to see, as so many people in our community do, they find their, their peers, their friends through sport, um, and the camaraderie that comes from being part of a team, from working together, from traveling to god knows where, uh, in the middle of the night, and then, uh, coming back to the north end and getting blotto. And then, uh, coming back to the north end and getting blotto, uh, was great. And so I was honored to be there and support the team. Um, I'm honored to have you guys be here for 20 years. I would love to see a Bingham Cup in Chicago, uh, which is an international, uh, gay rugby, uh, tournament, which brings thousands in. I know we've been on it in the past. I think we're a city of big shoulders and we would wear it well. So thank you for 20 years. Thank you for all you do and thank you, Mr. President.
Very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazado. Do we get that right?
Spazado, not Spada, correct, yeah. Excuse me. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm a huge, I don't know anything about the Dragons, guys, so I'm a huge sports fan. I gotta tell you, I don't get rugby, man. You guys got, as my colleague said, all of a sudden everybody's got a chance to grow a pair of kagunas. Well, I guess you guys got them every day, man. That is one crazy sport. So just want to congratulate you guys and, uh, on your 20 year anniversary. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members that wish to speak? The chair recognizes Alder Manal Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to congratulate you on, uh, 20 years and thank you for your patience for being here. Um, this long, I wanna, um, I, I don't know much about rugby either. I know that, um, there's no blocking, right? And so one person has a ball and then your teammates kind of are around you and they, they say, I'm with you, I'm with you. You know, all, all the way as the ball advances and, uh, and I love that. I love that spirit. And I, um, that's the kind of thing that we need right now is to tell each other and our teammates that we're with them. Um, no matter what, you know, especially in the hardest moments. Um, and you, you've done that, you know, over the past years. Um, you did that, um, during the aftermath of the George Floyd murder. You said that you're, you're with your teammates, you're with your, your black teammates, you're with your black spectators and your black community. Um, and you said that you were with them too. And, um, when, um, transphobia was on the rise and, and there were, um, proposals to limit, um, who could actually join your team? You said, no. You, you said, I'm with you, I'm, I'm with my trans siblings and, and it's a very inclusive sport. And so I, I want to thank you for that. I want to congratulate you and, uh, I, I want to continue to, to root for you. Um, and, uh, congratulate you for 20 years. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I too rise in support of this resolution. I want to congratulate the, uh, the Dragons rugby team on celebrating their 20th anniversary. Uh, when I read the, when I read what was on the docket, I did a double take because, uh, there's an organization in Chinatown called the Chicago Dragons Athletic Association. Um, and I've been a part of that for as long as I've been alive. And what I want to say to you is thank you. Thank you and congratulations to your organization because 20 years is a long time. 20 years is a lot of community building. 20 years is a couple of generations of people coming through. Um, and I wish you 20, 40, 60, 100 more, um, for what you're doing, what you're continuing to do in your community. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Okay, again, I stand with this body, this council to speak to this resolution as we celebrate the Chicago Dragons Rugby Football Club. I know for many people in the city might be surprised to learn that we actually have a rugby team here in Chicago. Uh, but they should be pleased to learn that, uh, just like any other Chicago sports team, uh, they are great and we are certainly rooting for you. Um, the Dragons work to increase awareness about the sport of rugby in the Midwest. They also work to increase diversity within the, the sport. So we appreciate that. And notably, the Chicago Dragons are the first team to accept and openly gay men in the Midwest and the first team to formally join the international gay rugby. And so thank you for that. And this team demonstrates, um, the inclusive values that our city is known for, making Chicago a much richer and a much more exciting place to live. Creating a welcoming and encouraging learning environment for all of your players, regardless of their background, um, on the home field, at the Montrose Turf Field, where they host teams from across the Midwest. Our entire city, we continue to cheer you, the Dragons, as you prepare to play. Um, I understand for the, uh, Bingham Cup in Rome next year. Oh, so I would imagine that if there are alders that are not familiar with the game of rugby, they might just become more curious. That was a joke. I am honored to congratulate the Dragons, your many successful years of competition. And, uh, as a sports team in Chicago, we love you, we appreciate you, particularly with the vast diversity that makes up your organization and your sport. So again, on behalf of the city of Chicago, we thank you and again, we appreciate you being patient with us today. Uh, Mark is the last, uh, person standing, uh, but that is the true spirit of the, the sport of rugby. As long as we're still standing, we got a fighting chance. Congratulations. And finally, our final resolution to date, um, is our recognition of HIV/AIDS Month. Are there any alders that wish to speak to the HIV/AIDS Awareness Month? This is your opportunity to do that now. You're on a roll. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
My day, Mr. President. Thank you. Uh, happy to lead off, um, as we talk about HIV/AIDS. Uh, and, uh, talk about this month, you know, December 1st marks World AIDS Day. Um, and I was honored to attend, um, a remembrance ceremony that was very meaningful, um, at AIDS Garden Chicago, which if you have not been there, I invite you all to join, um, an event or just to come and view the beautiful space that we've created on the lakefront just south of Belmont Harbor. Um, if you've been on the drive and seen the incredibly large Keith Haring green sculpture, that is AIDS Garden Chicago. Um, and it's dedicated to the people who fought this fight for over 40 years, who lost their lives, who continue to live, um, and continue to fight. Uh, and I think it's important that we know our history here, that we know how our government failed us because we, it was gay men dying and junkies, who cares about them? And how public health, uh, has taken on new meaning for the LGBTQ community when it comes to access to resources. Not just for HIV, but for, uh, if it's MPOX, uh, if it's syphilis, uh, if it's COVID, right? I mean, we, we know that, uh, what an important role that public health and government can play, uh, in this terrible epidemic and others that, that come to impact our community. Um, I did ask it during the budget hearings though, uh, about PrEP, Pre-Exposure Prophylaxis, which is a prescription that you take prior to being exposed to HIV that will prevent a new HIV infection. This is huge. It's been around about five years or more. I don't want to, I'm not a medical expert, but this is huge when it comes to treating this disease. Um, it means that if you are undetectable, you are untransmittable. That's for people who are currently HIV positive and those who are not. If we could, and the stat that public health gave us in October was that new HIV infections are the lowest they've been since the late eighties. And that is something that usually we don't always have a lot of good news to celebrate, uh, on World AIDS Day or on HIV/AIDS Awareness Month. Um, but we have to celebrate that and we have to learn that there are still barriers to access, accessing care, to accessing PrEP, to accessing housing, um, and, and the resources that we need to do to recommit ourselves to ending this epidemic once and for all. And so, um, make sure your friends are on PrEP, make sure they know about PrEP. Um, it's a conversation we all need to have regardless of our age and our status. Um, and it's going to change the way, um, this disease progresses for the next four years. So thank you for the work that we, we're doing here, the work of all of our great partner organizations, many of whom have a home in the 44th ward, but serve the entire city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alder Vasquez. Huh? Did you, did you not wish to speak?
No, I, I did. I apologize. I didn't know that I was next, but it's.
No, I got you. If you want to wait, we can go to someone else.
Maria? Okay, okay. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. President. Um, uh, yeah, I rise, uh, in association with this resolution, um, as we think about HIV and AIDS Awareness Month. Um, thank you, uh, Alderman Lawson in talking about what this experience has been. I think some of us are old enough, even if we were children in the eighties, to recognize really what a horrible, horrible time it was as the AIDS epidemic, um, was becoming known and widespread through the public. Not only horrible because of what the disease, uh, disease itself did to people's bodies at a time where the medical community didn't have an understanding how to address it, but equally as horrible in how much homophobia was propagated during that time, thinking about people who were afflicted and what the narratives looked like, uh, to your point, not just in the public, but from government itself in a way that didn't protect members of its own public when it was necessary to do so. Um, I do feel heartened that since that time, which feels like a long time ago, but wasn't terribly long, since that time, we've improved and have been able to address a lot of the fear and the hatred and ignorance that led to more people passing away than ever needed to and none of them needed to. Um, as we move forward and, and learn more about how we address things and how to prep and prepare for things, um, we want to make sure that folks who, uh, currently are, are living with HIV/AIDS know we are siblings, we are family. We want to make sure that no one and nowhere that same level of, of propagation of ignorance continues because lives are very much on the line. And I think there's lessons to be learned about what happened in that time. As we look forward to our future, I mean, we've had a pandemic where we were concerned about COVID and how that looked out. We don't know what's around the corner as it relates to the health of our family and our community members. And so we should never, ever, ever forget how ignorant we were as a public, how ignorant government was, and never seek to duplicate that ignorance going forward. So, um, I thank you, I thank all of our, our family and friends out there living with it and for their courage. Shout out to T-PAN for a lot of the work they do, uh, and fundraising as well towards the cause. Um, and thank you so much for the ability to speak on this matter. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Raymond Lopez.
Again, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the city council. I rise in support of this resolution as a member of the LGBT community, but also as somebody who represents African-American and Latinos who combined as of 2021 represented nearly two thirds of all individuals living with HIV or AIDS in the city of Chicago. As of last year, 13,000 individuals living in the city of Chicago with HIV, 11, over 11,000 had AIDS. I must respectfully disagree with my colleagues in encouraging things like PrEP, while I do know that they are beneficial because our goal has to be bringing that number to zero, bringing new cases to zero. And I feel that our Department of Public Health, as I stated during Pride Month several months, several months ago, has taken its eye off the ball on that. We are looking for ways to live with when we should be focusing on eradicating it, eradicating this virus across all demographics in the city of Chicago. We must recommit ourselves to ensuring that not just with the LGBTQ plus community, but even with the heterosexual community as well, that we are doing everything we can to ensure that we are bringing new cases of HIV and AIDS to zero. That we are helping individuals, particularly in the African-American community, which accounts for 47% of the HIV cases in Chicago. That we are doing everything we can to ensure that simple programs like the distribution of free condoms in our community are available. Something, Mr. President, that CDPH discontinued just before COVID. Those are the things that work. Those are the things that are true to science, that we know are the best ways outside of abstinence driving down these numbers. And that is what we must commit to as a community and as a council to ensure that this virus meets its end in our lifetime. So, Mr. President, I thank you for acknowledging the significance of this month and of this day and look forward to working with all of our colleagues to ensuring that one day HIV and AIDS will be a memory and not a condition with which we are forced to live with. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Um, thank you for being here. Um, I appreciate everyone's comments and I'm gonna kind of pick up where Alderman Lopez left off. Um, as he shared, we know that here in Chicago, uh, black Chicagoans are disproportionately impacted, uh, by HIV and AIDS. We make most, uh, we make up most of the new infections. And in this body, in previous years, we've actually spent a lot of time, um, trying to get our Department of Public Health, uh, challenging them on the way they distribute funds and funding into which organizations. Um, so I think with this, uh, Awareness Month, that's something that I want to, uh, raise awareness for, for us. Uh, while we are seeing the lowest infection rates of, uh, cases of AIDS, right? Because there are good medicines, there is better education. We know that this does not just affect, right, the gay male community, right? This affects the heterosexual community. It affects everybody. Um, and when we look at black Chicagoans and our Latina Chicagoans too, this affects a lot of women. So we have a lot of women living with HIV and AIDS, right? A lot of folks with children. And we do not have a funding structure that currently helps to get the messaging out to the communities that are most impacted by this. And that's something we need to shift. Uh, so, Mr. President, I hope that you, I hope are new, very excited about our, uh, new nominated, uh, uh, commissioner for the Department of Public Health. We'll be open to having that conversation with our community leaders, our organizations and providers, and of course, our residents. Um, because we should be able to approach, uh, next December, when we are having our HIV and AIDS awareness with better numbers for Chicagoans, especially our most impacted Chicagoans, um, and to keep seeing that number decrease. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, finally, unless someone else wishes to speak, the chair recognizes Alderman Robinson.
I rise, Mr. President, to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to work on this very important resolution with you. As my colleagues mentioned, yes, we are seeing the rates of HIV decrease. And in some instances, we can applaud ourselves. Unfortunately, we still see high rates of HIV in the African-American community. Mr. Mayor, for a mere different reasons, one is access to health. One is that we still unfortunately are not supporting our black-led organizations that have been fighting this fight for several years. Also, we need to make sure that we're building capacity in our African-American organizations that have been fighting this illness, this epidemic for several years. And so, Mayor, I look forward to working with you and the Chicago Department of Health for really setting the example for the United States on how we can get to zero. I believe the will is there, Mr. Mayor, for us to be able to do this. I believe that we have the capacity, uh, with the colleagues that I have in this body to finally do right, uh, by HIV, finally do right around the African-American community as we relate, as it relates to getting to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Um, I stand with this body to speak to this resolution designating December 2023 as HIV/AIDS Awareness Month in the city of Chicago. As we take this time to acknowledge the ongoing fight against HIV/AIDS, let's certainly remember those who have gone on, who have been tremendous leaders in this fight for not just awareness, but to eradicate this disease. And for decades, this disease has posed an incredible challenge to public health worldwide. Countless lives and communities are impacted across the globe. 22,000 residents currently, the city of Chicago is estimated, live with HIV. So we have come a long way, this fight against stigma surrounding an HIV diagnosis. But of course, the work has to continue. In this month, as we recognize this work, let us educate one another. Let's break down the misconceptions that perpetuate the fear that ultimately leads to discrimination. And also in the month of December, let's spread awareness about the tools that are available to prevent HIV, including HIV prevention medicines like PrEP. There's more support than ever available to residents who are living with HIV. So through the Chicago Department of Public Health, residents have access to HIV testing, PrEP support, mental health counseling. residents have access to HIV testing, PrEP support, mental health counseling, medical transportation, primary care, housing, and more. We stand in solidarity with the state as it has embarked upon a very ambitious program called Getting to Zero. This plan is to end the HIV epidemic of the year twenty thirty. I'm grateful that we are adopting this resolution and making December HIV/AIDS Awareness Month in Chicago so that we can reinvigorate our efforts to prevent the spread of this disease and demonstrate our care for those who are affected. And so, let's remember those, again, who have lost this fight. Let's build a more comprehensive, resilient, much healthier future for everyone. Thank you again, and thank you, Luke, for hanging around with us today. Let's give Luke a nice round of applause. And so, just leave from this body, another incredibly patient group that has been with us today. Very proud that our high school football team are state champions. Mount Carmel's in the house. So if we could, I would like to just grant leave, since the rules have been suspended. The chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Good afternoon. I'm here to recognize Mount Carmel Football for not only becoming state champions in twenty twenty-three, winning back-to-back state championships, and also record-tying their fifteenth championship, the most in Illinois State history for one high school. Mount Carmel High School was founded in nineteen hundred as a fifth ward institution that is focused on educating young men, and these men have done the best as student athletes. And I just want to acknowledge Sometimes Player of the Year, I'm gonna screw the name up, Darian Dupree, who first Mount Carmel player since nineteen eighty-one to be voted as Sometimes Player of the Year. This year, he had one hundred fifty-one carries, eleven hundred yards, sixteen touchdowns, twenty receptions, seven hundred sixty-four yards, eight receiving touchdowns, and had one hundred fifty-five yards in the championship game, leading the caravan to a thirty-five-ten win.
There he is, there he is.
You know, I myself am a proud Keweenee alum, but will always recognize young, our young people in their pursuits going forward. So I yield time to anyone else who'd like to speak.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this important recognition. My colleague put it so well. Now, Mr. President, Mount Carmel opened its doors in nineteen hundred. For a hundred and twenty-three years, they have been educating young men from across our great city. And if everyone here remembers back in the, in the sixties and seventies, when we saw great turmoil in neighborhoods on the south and west sides, it was Mount Carmel that stayed entrenched and an anchor in the Woodlawn community, and they're still there today. With us, along with these wonderful student athletes, is our principal, Mr. Scott Tabernacki, a two thousand and two graduate of Mount Carmel. Mr. Tabernacki, please. Phil Segrows, who serves as athletic director, and also the head coach of the Mount Carmel Football Team, two thousand and nine graduate, Jordan, and a two thousand and thirteen Heisman Trophy finalist. You know, we could talk about fifteen straight, fifteen state championships and back-to-back in three and four years, three and five years, but I think the most important thing to note is what these leaders in the school do preparing these young men to be leaders in the world. I am a proud graduate of Mount Carmel High School, as are a few people here in this body. These young student athletes, you guys stand up again. Their parents made great sacrifices to send them to Mount Carmel, and we have a saying at Mount Carmel, and I think these guys could probably recite it, but I'm not gonna make them do it. You came to Mount Carmel as a boy. If you cared to struggle and work at it, you will leave as a man. These young men are our future, and what a great diverse group we have here today. You know, we singled out a few of these guys, but these guys are all leaders. These guys are all our future leaders. I just want to say I'm proud to be a Mount Carmel High School alum, and very proud of these young men and the men that do the leading in the building. Thanks for your patience today. This is, this is quite a field trip for them, six hours at a Chicago City Council meeting.
Yeah, we're working on that. Thank you all very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you. As a De La Salle alumni, this is gonna be difficult. I first want to recognize my childhood friend, Principal Tabernacki, and the work he's done there to lead these young men every day. It's a journey. And we've talked about it when I see him, and I want to compliment him on the great job that he's done, so please. Coach Lynch, thank you for leading this program and these young men, great young men here. Thank you for what you do, thank you for taking a role at Mount Carmel, and I just want to say thank you. Mount Carmel is such an important institution in the city of Chicago.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this. As a far northwest sider, graduate of Notre Dame High School, not quite a rival of, of Mount Carmel, but one that has always, has the last, I don't know how many years, watched the success story of Mount Carmel. The best part about it is it's constant, and it's a strength of growing strong men. You know, it's, it's building a philosophy through hard work, dedication towards a sport that builds you and makes you a stronger person in life, and you've done that for so many years at that school. Unfortunately, I had to watch from the far northwest side your success in championships. It was not the happiest of times growing up, but when you grow up and get to a certain point, you appreciate it more, especially to you coaches sacrificing and dedicating your time. As a coach myself, I know how much you give, and you don't do it for the accolades. You do it because it's better than everything else. It's the worst day you could be having at work or, or at home when you get on the field with those football players. In my case, it's hockey players. There's no other place you'd rather be, and it makes it so, so worth it. Mount Carmel is a name synonymous with the city of Chicago, and I say that with love for my own high school on the northwest side, which isn't quite in Chicago, but it's filled with Chicagoans. Keep up the great work, make us proud. You're not just known on the southwest side, you're known throughout the entire country for being a powerhouse in football, and God bless you, Godspeed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderman David Moore.
Well, I'm only standing up because my godson, Alan McCoy, who's not here, is on the squad, because y'all be whipping up on my Wolverines, and I don't like that. But I am just so proud of you all. I normally don't watch a lot of high school football games on television, but when you all were on the other week, you all made me watch because you all were doing such an outstanding job. And I want to commend you, young men, and the coaches. I had to stand up because we deal with so much in this council from a challenging standpoint, some from a negative standpoint, but there's nothing like our you, and, and you all have deserved the right to be down here, to be recognized. If people don't understand, it's, it's bigger than sports for people who are athletes or people who are involved in it in a major way. All the training you all do, and still have to go to class, keep up your grades. You, you, you all deal with so much stuff in terms of what you have to do in order to be a good team to win a championship. And, and that doesn't come easy. And so I want to just congratulate you all, keep winning. I was there the other day for a basketball game, and I saw some jerseys in the rafters. I didn't see McNabb's jersey up there, so somebody gonna have to explain that one to me. And, but it's, it's, it's good, and I want, hopefully, some of you all's jerseys, who's broken records, who've done some good things, will be up in those rafters real soon. And I, for seniors, how many seniors are on this squad? Raise your hand, seniors. You all are going on to bigger and better things, but learn and keep those values that you learned out at Mount Carmel and that toughness that you learned in Chicago, especially for the you all that's going away and leaving here. Keep that with you, and it's gonna carry you through. And so I wish you much success. Enjoy, enjoy the rest of your senior year. Enjoy high school, have fun, go out with a bang along with this championship, and I wish all of you all the best as you go in the future. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Lamont Robinson.
Mr. President, I rise to give a big congratulations to Mount Carmel High School. I am a two thousand graduate, believe it or not, of Mount Carmel High School, and in two thousand, we won the championship. But I really want to speak today, Mr. President, about what Mount Carmel did for me as a young black boy on the south side of Chicago. Mr. Mayor, my political career started out at Mount Carmel as the vice president of the Student Government Association. I lost my father when I was at Mount Carmel, who was a city worker, building inspector, in nineteen ninety-nine. It was Mount Carmel that wrapped their arms around me and made sure that I stayed on track, graduated from Mount Carmel, and then going on to Clarkland University. I appreciate Mount Carmel because it was the exposure that I got to, again, keep me on the right track. You see, a lot of times when we look at our young men in the city of Chicago, particularly our young black men, Mr. Mayor, it is exposure. The reason that they go down the road of gangs and drugs and violence is because of exposure. And I believe for certain that if it wasn't for Mount Carmel, Mr. Mayor, that I would have gone down that road. And so I owe a lot to this great institution. Young men, keep striving, keep making us proud, and God bless.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Spazardo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to jump on the caravan. No pun intended, guys.
Very good, very good.
That's good. You like that one, huh? Thank you. Congratulations, guys. As an outsider, a northwest sider who's a huge sports fan and follows high school sports, the accomplishments that that school has had in not only football, also basketball, pros, many pros have come out of that school, so I just want to say, like my colleague here says, that's an awesome foundation for you. I also went to private high school. My school didn't last since nineteen hundred, it didn't even make it for fifty years, so. But once again, just want to congratulate everybody. Keep your eye on the prize. As most of you know, your football career, I'm sure, is over, and now it's time to get down to the nitty-gritty and start learning and being successful individuals in life. So congratulations, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Alderman Sam Nugent.
Mr. President, I too rise in support of this resolution and wish to extend my congratulations to Mount Carmel. I too watched a lot of your games, and as my colleague was reading the records, that was impressive. Those were a lot of tutties, so congratulations. And, you know, several of my colleagues and I catch up here in between meetings and talk about high school football. It's incredibly important, and when we, as a council, talk about opportunities for youth and things to do, I don't know what you guys do on a Friday night, but Friday Night Lights is a big deal in my family, and it is exciting to go watch football games and cheer on different schools and high schools and reach out to different aldermen and alderwomen when I'm in their ward to cheer on the high schools and their communities. And so thank you for providing a heck of a season, and what a thrill for me to watch, you guys. So congratulations. Go do great things. When you excel in the field, you excel in life, so go do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders that wish to celebrate this incredible accomplishment? Yes, the chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President, to Mount Carmel. As a former De La Salle student, you all used to embarrass us every Friday night. But nevertheless...
Oh, the other mic. Oh, my bad. Now it's him.
Yeah, every Friday night, you all used to put on the greatest show on turf. And one Friday night, myself and Jim Sheehan from De La Salle went to go witness greatness. You all put on an example of both hospitality and love, and to the men's club and the fathers' club, you all set a standard of manhood. And so to Mr. Michael Smith, who's always bringing Mount Carmel boys around men, thank you for being that example, and to the leadership that doesn't get paid to match your sacrifice, thank you for keeping that sacrifice and setting an example for all of us in the city of Chicago. So God bless you, Mount Carmel.
Thank you very much. Are there any other alders? I like how Alderman Hall was starting to negotiate someone else's union contract right on the floor. Right, that's how much we believe in workers. Anyone else? Again, congratulations, well done. And of course, we're looking forward to the one person who is not a senior in that particular bunch come to hang out and see you all play. So congratulations again, Mount Carmel. Okay, Alderman Mitchell, for the passage of all three of these resolutions.
Mr. President, I move passage in the omnibus.
All three resolutions, hearing no objections, so ordered. Alderman Mitchell, to return back to the regular order of business.
Mr. President, I move that we return to the regular order of business.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications.
Communication from His Honor, the mayor, to the Honorable, the city council of the city of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chief Financial Officer, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the city's second lien wastewater transmission revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-four, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed five hundred million dollars. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Controller, I transmitted with an ordinance designating the twenty twenty-four municipal depositories. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Budget Director, I transmitted with a Fund nine twenty-five amendment. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Chief Procurement Officer, I transmitted with an ordinance amending section two dash ninety-two dash three forty of the municipal code regarding pre-qualified contractors for city projects. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the twenty twenty-four service provider agreement with the Belmont Central Chamber of Commerce for Special Service Area Number Two. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the twenty twenty-four service provider agreement with South Chicago Parents and Friends Incorporated for Special Service Area Number Five. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Economic, Capital, and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned properties located at forty-three thirty-seven South Lake Park Avenue, thirty-four thirty-five West Twenty-third Street, and thirty-one oh-nine East Ninety-second Street. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with ordinances authorizing the negotiated sale of city-owned properties. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmitted with ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties for adjacent neighbors under the City Block Builder Land Sale Program. Your favorable consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance and loan restructuring for Brainerd Senior Preservation LP. Your favorable consideration... Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Housing, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of financial assistance to Duell Development Corporation for acquisition of three buildings through the preserving existing affordable rentals program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of the Mayor's Office of People with Disabilities, I transmitted with an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Chicago Housing Authority regarding Accessibility Home Modification Program. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmitted with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code to make technical corrections and adjustments to the Chicago Construction Codes. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Buildings, I transmitted with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code regarding the licensing of apprentice plumbers, plumbers, and plumbing contractors. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmitted with appointments to various special service areas. Your favorable consideration of these appointments will be appreciated. Very truly yours, signed. Brandon Johnson, Mayor, refer to Command on Economic Capital and Technology Development. City Clerk Anna Valencia hereby informs the City Council that the following documents were filed in her office relating to the respective subjects designated as follows. Executive Order Number 2023-20, Establishing the Chief Homelessness Officer. Executive Order Number 2023-21, Regarding Extremelining City Development Processes. The Determination Certificate of City of Chicago Regarding First Amendment to Resolve Line of Credit Agreement with RBC Capital Markets LLC and Royal Bank of Canada as a financial note of December 29th, 2021, aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed $225 million. The Office of Inspector General's Follow-Up Audit Report Concerning City's Compliance with Tax Increment Financing Sunshine Ordinance and Tax Increment Finance Surplus Executive Order. And the Expression of Opposition to Propose Zoning Reclassification of Property at 2907 through 2923 West Irving Park Road. City Clerk Valencia also informs the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 9th, 2023, and which were required to be published in book or pamphlet form in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on December 13th, 2023 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City of Chicago. City Clerk Valencia also informs the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting held on November 15th, and which were required by statute to be published in book or pamphlet form or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on December 13th, 2023 by being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies of the Journal of Proceedings of the City of Chicago. City Clerk Valencia also informs the City Council that the following ordinances which were passed by the City Council on November 15th, 2023, and which were requested to be published in special pamphlets, were published in special pamphlets on December 5th, 2023. The imposition of tax levies approving the amendments of budgets, amendment of certain boundaries, and execution of service provider agreements for special service areas number 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 13, 16, 17, 18, 19, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28-2014, 29-2014, 31, 33, 34, 35-2015, 38, 39, 42, 43, 44, 45, 47, 48, 50, 51, 52-2021, 54, 56-2022, 59-2022, 60, 61-2023, 62, 63, 69, 71, 72, 73, 76, 77, and 80. City Clerk Valencia also transmits here with the following miscellaneous communications reports requiring City Council action. Zoning classifications of particular areas which are referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Claims against the City of Chicago which are referred to Committee on Finance. Establishment of a gun violence reduction and regulation ordinance which is referred to Committee on Public Safety. And correction of the November 7th, 2023 City Council Journal of Proceedings, which is referred to Committee on Committees and Rules. Your Honor, that concludes the report of communications from the mayor and city officers.
Thank you very much. We will now complete our committee reports. The Committee on Budget and Government Operations, the Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
At 2:20, members of the council reported for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held the committee on December 8th. Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication regarding a proposed ordinance concerning redevelopment with a NOF grant to Ellen Alderman and the Rebuild Foundation uh, to repurpose St. Lawrence School at 1341-53E72nd Street into residencies tech and fab labs promoting art, music, writing, craftsmanship, disciplines for emerging artists. Alderman Harris? Okay, well, I thought Alderman Harris had something on it. Go ahead.
Our Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you. Um, today I'm a proud mom. Uh, and I tell this little story that I went to St. Lawrence uh, as a preschooler. And I had my first cut there on a little red wagon in the play lot. And so subsequently, I've never forgotten going to school at St. Lawrence. But now that the aftergaze is coming and doing this amazing investment in that property to create the artist loft and incubator, um, it will be wonderful to help start um, the type of catalyst that we need in that particular part of South Shore to regenerate it, to bring the economic vibrancy that that part of the world needs. Uh, I am happy and pleased to support this project. Uh, it's truly gonna be a life changer again for our South Shore, for Alderman, Yancey, and our part of the universe. And not to mention, we forget Alderman Gregg Mitchell is down there in that part of the world too. So I'm thrilled to have that program and thrilled for all the, the, the changes, the positive changes that will happen because of that uh, investment in that project. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item number two is a communication regarding a proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year 2023 amendment within Fund 925. Uh, I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Uh, item number three is a communication regarding a proposed ordinance concerning a fund transfer within the Committee on Public Safety for year 2023. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Uh, item number four is a communication regarding a proposed ordinance concerning the transfer of funds within the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development for year 2023. I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Uh, item number five is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning the transfer of funds within the Committee on Workforce Development for year 2023. I make the same objection, I make the same motion if there's no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Committee on Contracting Oversight and Equity, Chair recognizes Chairwoman Mitz.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Contracts, Oversight, and Equity. We held a meeting on December the 5th, 2023 to consider item number 02023-0002891, a re-referral of an amendment of Municipal Code, Section 2-74, that 020 regarding a veteran hind preferencing initiative and requirements to the Committee on Workforce Development. Sponsor in autumn was Alderman Viejas. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendation of the Contract and Oversight and Equity Committee by the same roll call. Vote as item number one on the Committee on Public Safety and the unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Anyone wish to speak to this? Hearing no objections, no hands, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, that concludes my report.
Very well, thank you very much. The Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, the Chair recognizes Chairman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development, which held a meeting on Tuesday, December 5th. Committee held a meeting and recommends passage of the following items. Item one on the report is an approval for issuance of a Class 6B tax incentive for 328 West 40th Place located in the 3rd Ward. I move for passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item two on the report is the ordinance on tax levy, scope of services, budget, and management agreements to a special service area which was collectively voted on by the committee members introduced by Mayor Johnson during November 1st, uh, 2023 City Council Meeting. SSA Number 10. I move for passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Chairman, uh, Mr. President, additionally, Mr. President and members of the City Council, on Wednesday, December 6th, the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development and Committee on Environment Protection and Energy met and jointly passed the resolution to hold subject matter hearing on the city's lead service line replacement programs. At this hearing, the joint committee addressed the public health crisis caused by lead in waters, water service lines. The Commissioner of Water Management provided testimony regarding the current state of lead service line replacement programs in Chicago. The joint committee also heard from city public health and public finance officials, officials, uh, water safety experts, environmental justice advocates, union leaders, and from officials of other municipalities that have successfully implemented lead service line programs. I am, I and my many fellow committee members look forward to working with you to expeditiously implement an aggressive lead service line replacement program that will effectively address the public health threat posed by hundreds of thousands of toxic, toxic water service lines still being used by Chicago residents. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For the Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, the Chair recognizes Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a committee meeting on Monday, December 11th, 2023. The committee recommends passage of the following two items. Item number one is a substitute to ordinance 2023-0002937, amending Municipal Code regarding registration of lobbyists and regulations pertaining thereto. The substitute was circulated and accepted by the committee. This item passed unanimously among all members present. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is ordinance 2023-0005983, which is the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Public Building Commission of Chicago, providing for the city's inspector general to serve as the commission's inspector general. This item passed unanimously amongst all members present. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chair recognizes Chairman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held in-person meetings on November 29th, 2023, and December 5th, 2023. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of four ordinances. These include various licensing, lease, and miscellaneous agreements. One item was deferred in committee. The following items um, from the Department of Housing are group for convenience. Item number one, uh, item 02023-0005797, Authorization of Multifamily Programs Funds or Secure Land Sale, Securitization Corporation Bonds to Lakeview Landing LP for construction or permanent supportive housing on property donated by Lakeview Lutheran Church at 835 West Addison Street in the 44th Ward. Item number two, 02023-0005948, License and Subscription Services Agreement with ProLink Solutions, Inc. for the Department of Housing Data Management. I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the following is from the Department of Family and Support Services. Item number three, 02023-0005793, Authorization for Flexible Housing Pool Program with initial grant funding and maximum five-year extension of landlord rental subsidy program by the Department of Family and Support Services as administrator. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And finally, from December 5th, 2023 meeting, item four is from the Department of Assets Information Services. Items 02023-0005731, the Third Amendment to Lease Agreement with Norla South Financial Associates, LLC for additional lease space at Suite 1600 to service the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability and the Office of Climate and Environmental Equity during build-out on the 9th floor at 2 Norla South Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. For the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, Chairman, Chair recognizes Chairman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, which held a committee meeting on December 7th, 2023. Uh, during the meeting, a subject matter hearing was held to discuss the African diaspora experience through immigration, to discuss Haitian experience uh, in migration, and discuss the history of the welcoming city ordinance. Uh, the United African Organization, the Coalition of Haitian-American Organizations in the Chicagoland area, the Illinois Coalition of Immigrant and Refugee Rights, and the National Immigrant Justice Center, uh, all provided testimony. I make mention in that to invite all members of the council to join us at the committee as we plan on having more focus on the experience of the African diaspora as it relates to uh, immigrant uh, experience as well as our other communities. We will be doing regular report outs. Uh, additionally, the committee has a report recommending passage of a resolution which asks President Biden to expand parole and work permits to both new migrants and long-term contributing immigrant workers, which passed out of the committee. Uh, that ordinance was SR 2023-0005289. Uh, if members wish to speak, some articulated that they were interested in doing so. And I'd like to request that the sponsor, Alderperson Fuentes, uh, close us out uh, to speak.
Individuals who wish to speak to this, these items. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you. And as always, I'll take responsibility first. Um, and I know it just seems like maybe a resolution, but I wasn't aware of the resolution. I didn't attend um, the committee because I didn't, uh, I wasn't aware of this item on the committee. Therefore, just as a blanket statement, it, it sounds good on the surface, but sometimes I have um, deeper questions um, that may get me to a yes or that may get me to a no. And so therefore, um, since I wasn't in that hearing to ask, ask those questions, um, I cannot support this um, today. I would like to have more information. A general blanket, it sounds great on the surface, but I gotta understand what that means. And I'm, I'm just not clear on that to be able to vote intelligently yes on it. So I'm gonna have to vote no.
Thank you very much. So the record will reflect that Alderman Moore wishes to be recorded as a no uh, once the motion is made uh, for passage. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate Alderman Moore's comments in terms of making sure that we um, we discuss these proposals and we discuss it in council. This particular proposal, it comes from our community, an immigrant community that is looking at solutions and not to continue to fuel divisions or misunderstandings of misinformation. This important resolution, I want to thank, I think we have in the audience here some members who have been front of the Gerco, making sure that we put this, to make visible these solutions that are within reach and that we need to discuss as we see a serious attack on our city that we should all see. Uh, but what it is, uh, we see human trafficking. We hear the buses of asylum seekers inhumanly to our city. A five-year-old little girl died in transit because of these inhumane policies. As we see the dehumanization and the, uh, of course, political expediency of those who have an obsession with the city of Chicago, yet I, I yet to see some of these same interests to come and actually walk and talk to our communities. But I'll tell you that I would like to thank, in particular, a very important part of our history, uh, which is um, related to our great beloved leader, Rudy Lozano. And I'll tell you that I'm not surprised that his family, actually, here with us today. We have Tanya Lozano and members of Healthihood, our young people, as well as, of course, Lincoln Methodist Church, Pastor Emma Lozano, uh, the sister or our beloved leader, Rudy Lozano, fundamental part of the coalition of Black and Brown unity with Mayor Howard Washington. This coalition is proposing solutions to the crisis. This proposal, this proposal is very simple. This proposal, what it intends is to make sure that President Biden actually uses executive power when it is important. We have seen a president that bypasses Congress. We have seen a president that bypasses Congress to sell, to continue to sell arms and bombing innocent children, but yet we don't see the same executive power to help with solutions in our community. This is a very simple resolution urging President Biden and federal government to take action and bring solutions to the table. What we're asking of President Biden is actually to use his executive power to expand something that has already been done, which is to provide war permits, and we have a lot of experience with that. We're talking about those farm workers, we're talking about people who are providing our food in front of our table, we talk about essential workers who are right now suffering for family separations, we're talking about the 2 million people who have seen a crisis in their families because of separation, we talk about 11 million people who are looking for dignity and respect and are providing essential services to our community. That's what this executive power is so important, because we need to continue to talk about solutions and not pitching one against each other that is only fueling fires in our community. This important resolution, it does just that, and it's critical that our colleagues learn about these solutions. I for one, I want to also thank our colleagues that came to the border, Alderman Hall, Alderman Robinson, and it's important that we talk about these solutions that we provided and we have sent to federal authorities. We need solutions. We cannot continue to operate the way we are. This simple resolution is calling on the federal government to take executive power and executive orders when it is important for our communities to do so. And finally, we got to make sure that we understand really what a sanctuary city does. What we're asking our colleagues, I'm really concerned about some of these agendas, is to punish undocumented residents that have no fault of irresponsible federal policies and economic sanctions that are driving millions of people out of their homes here in our country. We want to make sure that we talk about these atrocities and these injustices that are tracked with data and are tracked with evidence, the three, number three, the main nationalities coming to the US right now, Venezuelans, Cubans, and Nicaraguans, among other Haitians and many other countries, tied completely and related to economic sanctions. And I know many people want to blame or undocumented community, but I tell you, here where we got to sanction us is the economic policies that are creating tremendous suffering at home and providing no solutions. This is a step forward in the right direction, and it should be an unanimous vote. And I hope that my colleagues talk about unity, talk about solutions, and call the federal and the state governments accountable, the same federal and state governments that have done little for Chicagoans, very little for Chicagoans. And what we talk about is making sure that we bring attention to what is actually happening instead of dehumanizing and blaming innocent people who are just the backbone of our economy, the backbone of our economy. But yet, when it comes to supporting these initiatives, we see people who will continue to demonize us. So again, I want to finally just thank our colleague, Alder Person Jesse Fuentes, for making echo of this important cause, and I hope that we get more solutions that are really going to address the issue and not continue to fuel the divisions and pitches against each other. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members that wish to speak to this item? The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
I know they love me. Good afternoon, again, members, Mr. President.
Good afternoon.
I rise in support of those undocumented individuals who have been waiting for a resolution from the federal government, for them to be able to come out of the shadows. But I cannot and will not support this resolution, which openly acknowledges the fact that, and according to one of the recitals, states... Hold on, don't get upset, because I, nope, oh, I can. Whereas amid a protracted stalemate in Congress over immigration, President Biden has opened a back door to allow hundreds of thousands of new immigrants into the country, significantly expanding the use of humanitarian programs for people escaping war and political turmoil around the world. Mr. President, to be clear, what we are seeing at the border and in our backyard isn't a back door to a broken immigration system. It is the manipulation of the asylum seeker laws of this country, where we are now allowing millions of individuals to come to this country under false pretenses with no immediate hearings set to determine whether or not their claim for asylum has grounds in the United States. These individuals are, yes, using a back door to get into this country because, yes, the federal government has failed to fix the front door since 1987. What we cannot allow is for that continual use of the manipulation of the processes at hand for individuals to come here if we ever expect to be able to move forward as a country. Now, I understand that when we look at some of the other recitals here, we say that by the end of 2023, as my colleagues stated, we expect 360,000 individuals of Venezuelan, Cuban, Nicaraguan, and Haitian descent to gain admission into this country through this 360,000 individuals is barely 10% of the individuals who have crossed this border in the last 14 months. There are literally millions of individuals who are coming into this country, granted because they believe in what they, what our country has to offer, but they're doing it in all the wrong ways. And to be perfectly honest, Mr. President, when I look in the eyes of my residents, when I talk to my community, you may be surprised to know, our undocumented, our immigrants themselves, our children of immigrants, they too are frustrated. They too want to know why the impetus is now when for so many, millions of individuals, there was no concern, there was no immediacy. We allowed DACA to expire, we've allowed immigration paths never to be realized, and yet we are moving now, leapfrogging all, over all the individuals in our communities who've been waiting for that path forward. I would be remiss if I did not speak out for them and say that it is not fair and not right that we try to lump everyone together because of the fact that we are not all the same, our paths are not all the same, and our goals are not all the same. When you look at the individuals who come here, particularly those brave men and women from Mexico, like my great-grandfather, like my husband's parents, who came here for a better life, they were respectful and kept moving forward in hopes that one day they would have a true path to become citizens of the United States. But that is not what we're talking about here. What we are talking about is, again, mixing apples and oranges when that is not an argument to be made, and that what we are saying here now is that it's okay because you're all here. And now, for some reason, we're going to conflate different experiences, different purposes as one and the same. They are not the same. Anyone who would talk to any individual from Brighton Park, Little Village, or back of the yards will tell you, our experiences are not the same. And before anyone gets it twisted in the back that I somehow don't care about our migrants, let's not forget, I opened my doors to the migrants six months ago, more so than two-thirds of the council in this room. We know exactly what we're talking about when we say we're trying to help individuals find their path, but at the same time, you cannot leapfrog over those who've been waiting for a lifetime for that path to be given to them. It is two different issues. It is two different issues, Mr. President.
If you have an outburst, you will be asked to be removed.
These are two different issues, Mr. President, and they should be treated accordingly. We should deal with our 11 million undocumented, our DACA, those who've been waiting for decades for help, and we should also be calling on the federal government, on Joe Biden, on your members of Congress to actually stand up, secure the border, and focus on the merit hearings for those who are assigned asylum cases. That is how we move forward, not in this manner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Crabs in a box. Crabs in a barrel, crabs in a box. You got crabs at the bottom of a barrel, one of them's trying to get out, he's almost out. He almost got that opportunity, but you got somebody bringing him down. You got someone pulling him back. Now, let's, let's, let's be straight here. The fact is, the fact is, is that we've had migrants in this country undocumented for decades. They're our brothers and sisters, and they deserve a pathway to citizenship too. Every day, those migrants deserve a pathway to citizenship because that's what? Those folks are keeping our social security system solvent in this country. Those folks are paying taxes every day when they purchase goods, when they buy a home at Second Federal Savings and ITIN loans. They deserve, and this resolution speaks to them, and their ability to gain legal lawful status, like my family members who are in this country and not citizens. But not one of my family members that has come here over the decades will look upon our recent migrants who happen to have an opportunity to work status and say that they shouldn't have that. We need to live in abundance and not in scarcity. We've got too many who are painting a false narrative here, and be clear about those false narratives. They come from a scarcity mindset, they come from a mindset that doesn't believe in the power of all of us and all of us being able to come together. That's what I'm here to say. By migrants moving forward, it doesn't mean anybody else is moving back. By one of us moving forward, we all move forward. That's what this resolution states, and that's why I'm very proud, Jesse, to support this resolution. The president has an obligation. I agree, the craziness that's happening here as far as migrants being sent here, many of which not in their own volition, is insanity. It's coming from people with perverse political intentions. Let us not fall into that trap. I pray that we, as a city, will remember our roots and the legions of people who have come here in multiple ways, but have come here to make this great city even better, and that's what this resolution speaks to. So thank you for presenting this, you have my 100% support.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman, Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. To quote a famous Italian-American, I wasn't planning to speak on this item today, but it's amazing where we're at and we're actually having to talk at length about this. For the last several months, we've had dozens of people sleeping at the 14th District Police Station up until recently, and less than a quarter mile away from them, we have businesses up and down Milwaukee Avenue throughout Logan Square saying, all we want is to be able to hire these folks. And then a quarter mile away, we have people saying, all we want to be able to do is work. The fact that we have a continuing roadblock on that matter is sad and depressing and disheartening, and it says grim things about a political landscape far above this city, but for us to at least be able to send the right message today through this resolution is very encouraging to those, again, who just want the opportunity to work in this city. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Chairman Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Crabs in a barrel, just want to make sure I get that right. So as we, as we think about our nation and to address some of the build-a-wall contingent here in the, in the City Council, there are three groups that we should think about when we think about this nation. There are the indigenous Native Americans who are here and had their land stolen from them. Last time I checked, they didn't require papers of the pilgrims. They weren't giving speeches about who was let in or not, so that's one group. The second group are descendants of slavery who were forced here from another country to be here dead. No, no question about it, were forced, brought here and mistreated, as we all know. We want to make sure that there is space to actually allow that, because sometimes people don't say that, we should say it every single time. Then you have everybody else, whether your last name is Laspada, no disrespect to our colleagues, Lopez, pick a name. They all come from immigrants that came to this country to add something to it, although people want to frame it as different experiences, it's not the same, that is a falsehood. When the Italians came to this country, they received the same narrative. They're not bringing their best. What are they doing to this country? When the Polish came, the same thing, Mexican, Asian, every single person from any other country that's come, the same narrative continues. The fact that some here are willing to regurgitate this, I'm concerned, I don't know how many sides of somebody's neck some people have. They're willing to say that they strand from migrant rights and look at our experience and look at us, we opened our doors a day after they sent a letter asking to close those same doors. If I were being nice, I'd say that's cognitive dissonance. If I were being honest, I'd call it hypocrisy. To say that you're some hero, that you went through this experience, and my parents went through the same experience, yeah, we've all gone through that. I'm the son of immigrants, my parents had to go through decades of me as a kid trying to teach them the laws of citizenship and the Constitution as a kid to get them ready to get their citizenship or any level of residency. It took forever as a kid trying to teach my parents to go through this stuff with little VHS tapes of rules, that's how far back it goes. And because they went through it like any other generation, to then say, well, my parents went through all that, so everyone else should also go through the same BS, is also a level of hypocrisy. We talk about how we want to grow our tax base, how we want to make the city thrive, how we know we've been losing tax base for a decade now. If we want to solve the problem rather than divide ourselves amongst ourselves, these folks that want to work, that want to contribute, like my parents did to the point that they got social security that still couldn't even pay them enough to afford rent so they had to move back, they want to work. That's everybody, the new arrivals, the ones that have been here for decades and haven't gotten it. And if you want to make a nation great and a city even greater, you give them the right to work so you add to your tax base and we all win. So when we have members out here who want to fuel congressional runs or otherwise because they want people to turn out based on their anger and fear rather than what they believe in information, we should reject that as a council because we see it for what it is. More BS, and I apologize for even going that far, I should curtail that a little bit, hypocrisy. So we want to make sure we solve this problem. You guys are tired of having government pay for all this stuff, you're tired of city funds paying for it, you're tired of the state having to figure out solutions, then give these folks the right to work that have been here, you don't have to pony up on the other end. This is something this council should be 100% behind, that the president and the federal government have failed and we have to shoulder the burden. So to call them out and ask them to put their, not even their money on, to change the legislation so folks can contribute to this country as everyone else has in every generation, just as we welcome our Italian, our Polish, our German, our Asian folks, that is what makes our country great, any hesitance to do that makes our country worse. So I don't care what red hat people have on, believe yourselves that you're not making the country better by saying it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Before we have the motion, there's another order that wishes to speak. Chair recognizes older woman Ruth Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President.
In my understanding, thank you, please. Chair recognizes older woman Ruth Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in salary with million of undocumented residents living in the shadows. These are beloved residents, neighbors, and friends who contribute to our economy, culture, and community. Work permits are proper and just for those already contributing in all levels of workforce in our country. There are with us, often quite literally beside us, beautifying our communities, so through landscaping, so you all know who are the ones doing the hard work, building homes and constructions, serving in restaurants, and even keeping our businesses going through the pandemic. These are our medical, there are medical facilities, these are sons and daughters of many immigrants who, I'd rather say that work in some of the corporate America, we are lawyers, we are doctors, we're first responders in other careers, but we're also elected officials. As a proud immigrant, I have the privilege to experience, embrace, and cherish the American dream. As a proud immigrant, I have the privilege to experience, embrace, and cherish the American dream. And I believe many others deserve the same opportunity. I call, I call upon the government to provide work permits for undocumented residents. I think we have proven ourselves for many, many years. We have been doing the hard work. We have been able to accomplish a lot of things. So what I, like I said, I think it's just right and just that our undocumented families also have the opportunity to have work permits. And I think this ordinance and calling the federal government does that. So I hope, you know, our federal government is listening to us and making sure this is happened because we all deserve respect. And again, I am standing out for all of our documented families that have been here in the state. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, to close, the chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I want to be clear. This resolution is not just for the diaspora of Latin America. This resolution is for every diaspora across the globe. There are Caribbeans that live in the city of Chicago. There are Africans that live in the city of Chicago. There are folks from the Middle East that live in the city of Chicago that make up our economy. The backbone of the city have quite literally built this city and they don't have the right to work. They have not been granted parole. We have many families who are living in fear because they are parents to citizen children and do not have the legal right to stay with their family members. We have watched the separation of families, not just here in the city of Chicago. You could go to the reddest state of this country in Florida, and there are undocumented families today being separated who have built the state of Florida. This resolution is asking us to demand for President Biden to fulfill the promise that he made on the campaign trail. And that was to provide parole and workers' permits to everyone that has built this country. This is not just a Latino problem. I want folks to understand that. I think that often the narrative that wins is the Latino one. But we have Italians, we have Polish, we have Russian undocumented migrant families that too deserve the right to parole and workers' permits. Often, the folks that live in this country without workers' permits are the ones with the lowest-paying jobs, are the ones that enter the workforce and have to deal with the most abusive work conditions. And when they're, when they ask to be treated better, or when they ask for a raise, they are told, you deal with what you get, and if you don't like it, then you can leave. You want to know why? Because they don't have workers' permits. They don't have the right to work in this country. But yet, the pay taxes, they fulfill our social security obligation, and they continue to be the backbone of the very infrastructure and the city that we are proud to live in. These are folks that have been here for decades. People that a lot of us call friends, some of them may be our aunts, uncles, even parents. This is not, again, don't let the narrative be that this is a Latino issue. It is not. Every undocumented and migrant individual that lives in this city, that has been working for decades, also deserve the right of parole and workers' permits. That's all this resolution is asking for. It's asking for President Biden to make good on his promise to be the president of everybody. And so I ask for my colleagues to vote in favor of this resolution. Because this is, this is a resolution based on our humanity, our shared humanity, to want to see all of our neighbors win and thrive. They have been here and they deserve to truly live and thrive in the city that they have helped us build. And so I look forward to your support on this resolution and combating all of the false narratives that folks like to make headlines. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes chairperson Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance in an associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
With the exception of two individuals that wish to be recorded as no, I have Alderman Moore and Alderman Lopez.
Sorry, let me reiterate. I moved the passage item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Public Safety and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification. With the exception of Alderman Lopez and Alderman Moore, despite the division, hearing no other objections, seeing no other hands, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. The chair recognizes, for clarity, we will go back for just a quick second to the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Chair recognizes chairperson Sixto Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just, just for the record, because of the change in order, the first motion was a vote, a roll call vote on the Committee on Public, Public Safety, not Finance.
Very well. Thank you for that clarification. The clerk will make that friendly amendment, that the first favorable roll call from public safety. Thank you very much. We're almost there, y'all. Two more committees here. The chair recognizes, for our Committee on Police and Fire, chair recognizes Chairman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which a meeting was held December 12th, 2023. There was one item before the committee, which the committee recommended do pass. The appointment of Cal Cooper as a member of the police board. Mr. President, if there's no objection, I move the passage of this item by the first most favorable vote, vote in the Committee on Public Safety in an unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, seeing no hands, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And finally, the Committee on Zoning, chair recognizes chairperson Lawson, vice-chairperson Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City Council presenting a series of reports for the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on November 30th, 2023. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of the members present. Pages one through eight contain various map amendments in the 2nd, 7th, 10th, 13th, 21st, 23rd, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 32nd, 33rd, 36th, 37th, 38th, 43rd, 44th, and 47th wards. I move passage of these items by the first most favorable, favorable roll call vote of the Public Safety Committee report and unassociated, I'm sorry, and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Thank you very much. Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page nine contains various large signs over 100 square feet in area, 24 feet above grade in the 6th, 7th, 11th, 12th, 22nd, 25th, 27th, 32nd, 42nd, 45th, and 50th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my first report. Presenting a series of reports for the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards, which held a meeting on December 12th, 2023. These reports are grouped for convenience. The following items were passed by a majority of members present. Page one contains document number O-2023-0005763, the amendment of the municipal code 17-5-0200 and 17-5-0207 regarding standards for rooftop and grade outdoor dining. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Public Safety Committee and un, and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number O-2023-0005759, the amendment of the municipal code by adding section 17-13-0303-D, optional administrative adjustment and variation to applications. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number O-2023-0005896, the historical landmark designation for the 2678 West Washington Boulevard building located in the 27th ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Lastly, pages one through three contain various map amendments in the 9th, 10th, 13th, 24th, 26th, 36th, and 37th wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection, noting that Alder Laspada would like to be recorded as voting no on document number O-2023-1732.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. On the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, my apologies. The chair recognizes Chairman Mitchell.
No worries, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on December 7th, 2023. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Pages two through four includes 24 ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards 1, 6, 11, 17, 22, 23, 27, 28, 29, 30, 32, 40, and 50. Page five includes items, ordinance 2023-0005908, a subdivision ordinance for a property located in the 26th ward. Page six includes items, substitute ordinance 2023-0005959, a vacation ordinance for a property located in the 29th ward. If there is no objection, I move passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of, of the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for the agreed-upon calendar. Chair recognizes older woman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received from the clerk Anna in Valencia a total of 124 items proposed for the agreed calendar consisting of congratulatory, commemorative, tributary resolutions from Clerk Valencia of following alderpersons. Alder Person Hopkins, Alder Person Harris, Alder Person Lee, Alder Person Quinn, Alder Person Lopez, Alder Person Coleman, Alder Person Curtis, Alder Person Tabarez, Alder Person Fuentes, Alder Person Irving, Alder Person Nugent, Alder Person Lawson, and Alder Person Gardner. I move these in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. For new business, the clerk will call the wards, I believe, beginning with the 50th ward.
Sony amendments which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Traffic regulations, traffic control signals, and traffic signs, which are referred to the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, grants of privilege on and over the public way, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, an exception from physical barrier requirement for commercial driveway alley access for parking facilities, which are referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Silverstein has proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 6450 North California Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderman Haddon has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of West Lunt Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alderman Haddon, Alderman Robinson, and Alderman Rodriguez have proposed resolution for expression of support and solidarity with Columbia College Faculty Union, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alder Person Manaha Happenworth has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-022, to disallow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Clark Street, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alder Person Martin has a proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-6-230, allowing booting operations in the 47th ward, which is referred to the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. Alder Person Martin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-84, by adding a new section, 2-84-050, establishing comprehensive staffing analysis for the Department of Police, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alder Person Martin also has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-022, to allow additional alcoholic liquor licenses on portion of North Damon Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alder Person Riley has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Rose Fay Thomas Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman, Alder Person Napolitano and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-36, by adding a new section, 2-36-762, establishing policy and procedures for leave following death of uniformed service members, which is referred to the Committee on Police and Fire. Alderman, Alder Person Vasquez and Alder Person Manaha Happenworth have a proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Elise Mallory Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Vasquez, Alder Person Vasquez has a proposed ordinance for a transfer of funds within the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights for the year 2023, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alder Person Spazado has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Persons Viegas and Laspada have a proposed resolution to call for hearings to discuss report entitled Wrongful Conviction Litigation Database, Chicago, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alder Person Viegas has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-32, by inserting a new section, 2-32-165, creating grant recipient information database, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alder Viegas and Alder Person Coleman have proposed order for the call for gender-based task force to study levels of violence affecting Black women and to formulate strategic response, which is referred to the Committee on Public Safety. Alder Person Viegas has proposed ordinance for establishment of a project labor agreement process between the city and, city and contractors who perform demolition, remediation, construction, and other site work on city property, which is referred to the Committee on Workforce Development. Alder Person Ramirez Rosé has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Alderman Robert and Eugene Branth Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman, Alder Person Ramirez Rosé has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as Miguel Nini Padilla Jr., which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Cruz has proposed ordinance for approval of nine of Central B subdivision, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Irvin has a proposed resolution to call for removal of City Council Office of Financial Analysis Director, Kenneth P. Williams, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Alder Person Irvin also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Irvin and others have proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, chapter 2-74, by adding new sections, 2-74-075, establishing hiring preferences for residents of socio-economically disadvantaged areas, which is referred to the Committee on Budget and Government Operations. Alder Person Burnett has proposed resolution, amend, for amendment of Rule 36 of the City Council's Rules of Order and Procedure by establishing Vice Mayor as ex-official member of all standing committees, which is referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alderman, Alder Person Burnett also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at various locations, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Fuentes has a proposed resolution to call on U.S. President Biden to facilitate de-escalation of ongoing violence in the Middle East and to allow for humanitarian assistance, which is referred to the Committee on Health. Two committees call, the Committee on Health and the Committee on Rules, the matters referred to the Committee on Rules. Alder Person Tabarez has a proposed order for the issuance of permits for signed signboards at 5417 South Pulaski Road, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning and Landmarks and Building Standards. Alder Person Moore has proposed orders for amendment of municipal code, section 4-60-023, to disallow additional packaged goods licenses on portions of South Ashland Avenue, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alder Person Lopez and others have proposed order to call for Chief Procurement Officer Elaine Valescas to file Order 2 and 3, 2023 Fiscal Contract Awards, and modification related to emergency declaration regarding ongoing migrant asylum seeker crisis, which is referred to the Committee on the Budget and Government Operations. Two committees have been called, the Committee on the Budget and the Committee on Contracts, the committees, matters referred to the Committee on Committees and Rules. Alder Person Quinn has proposed ordinance for designation of the 21st precinct of the 13th Ward as restricted residential zone prohibiting additional shared housing units and vacation rentals, which is referred to the Committee on License to Consumer Protection. Alder Person Mitchell has proposed ordinance for withholding of funds from Yellow Banana LLC due to lack of compliance with redevelopment agreement, which is referred to the Committee on Finance. Alder Person Robinson has proposed ordinance for amendment of municipal code, section 17-4-0404, regarding MLA reduction for downtown floor area bonuses, which is referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alder Person Robinson also has proposed ordinance for honorary street designation as President Barack Obama Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman Robinson also has proposed ordinance for an honorary street designation as Honorable Yolanda Travis Mack Way, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alderman, Alder Person Robinson also has proposed ordinance for vacation of the public alley in the area bounded by South Lake Park Avenue, East 29th Street, South Ellis Avenue, and East 30th Street, which is referred to the Committee on Transportation and Public Way. Alder Person Dowell and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings on the city's response to immigrant populations being marginalized, which is referred to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights. Alder Person Laspada has proposed resolution for expression of support for United Nations Resolution 377, known as uniting for peace, which is referred to the Committee on Health. Alder Person Laspada also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for Alderperson Laspada also has proposed orders for the issuance of permits for signed signboards, which are referred to the Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. Alderperson Laspada and others have proposed resolution to call for hearings to assess matters relating to socia- socioeconomically disadvantaged areas, which is referred to the Command Economic Capital and, and Economic Capital and Technology Development. Your Honor, that concludes the presentation of all dramatic introductions.
Approval of the journals? Alderman Mitchell for approval of the journals?
Madam President, pro temp. I am not aware of any corrections to the journals from the November ninth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting or the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting, regular meeting, and move that they be approved.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Unfinished business.
I am not aware of any unfinished business.
There is one more item under Clerk's Communications. Mr. Clerk, please, please proceed. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
This following matter is also placed in, on filing of the Office of City Clerk. Determination Certificate of City Chicago Regarding Wells Fargo Bank National Association as to Second Amendment to Revolving Line of Credit Agreement of December first, twenty twenty-three, aggregate outstanding amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five million dollars in miscellaneous business.
Oh, aware of miscellaneous? Oh, you just finished miscellaneous business? Okay, I'm all caught up now. Thank you. All right. So date and time for the next meeting? Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
President, except for the ordinance setting the date and time of the next meeting, I am not aware of any miscellaneous business.
Oh, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
President, uh, Mr. President, um, I would like to suspend the rules to go out of the regular order of business for an immediate consideration for a resolution to put, um, a referendum question on the ballot. And the reason I'm asking to do that is because my mother just had a procedure and I'm probably going to have to take care of her tomorrow. And I would like to see if this body would adopt the substitute ordinance as a olive branch of what we talked about, about putting a resolution on the ballot, um, to fill that last ballot position. And if we can just vote on that today, then we won't have to come back tomorrow, Mr. President, if the body so chooses.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor for, um, to suspend the rules to take up for immediate consideration of resolution. Okay. Or immediate consideration of, uh, olive branch resolution. Okay. And there's been a request for a roll call.
The substitute ordinance. He wants to do a substitute ordinance onto the ballot session. You want to do a substitute ordinance? Is that what you're talking about?
Better.
[inaudible]
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 Thank you. Thank you. The body will come back to order. Thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Alderman Bill.
The President, I withdraw my motion and I will see you tomorrow at ten o'clock.
Very well. Thank you. Uh, Alderman Mitchell, you were about to say?
Uh, Mr. President, before, um, I hand up the date and time ordinance, I want to acknowledge something today. Today is Ms., Chairman Michelle Harris's birthday. Huh? What did I say? What did I say? So I just wanted to wish her a happy birthday. We love you.
Thank you.
We're yours. Happy birthday.
All right. Mr. President, I handed up an ordinance to the clerk setting the date and time of the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Being ordained by the City Council of City Chicago, section one, the next scheduled meeting of the City Council of City Chicago shall be held on Wednesday, January twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, beginning at ten a.m. in the Council Chamber on the second floor in City Hall one twenty-one, North Los Allo Street, Chicago, Illinois. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its passage. Gregory Mitchell, um, Alderman, seventh ward.
I moved, I moved passage in the omnibus.
Hearing. There's a point of clarification. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Haddon.
So one, I don't think anybody had said point of clarification, so that's for your bingo cards, for all of you playing Festivus Bingo. Um, two, what just happened? Because there was a, there was a motion and I did not hear, uh, if you could repeat where we landed on that, and I think most of us were wrong.
Thank you very much. So Alderman Bill withdrew his motion, uh, for the immediate consideration to suspend the rules to take up this item. And, uh, we are going to return, uh, tomorrow. And, um, that's what happened. Okay. Uh, you're welcome. And now it has been, uh, there's a, there's been a motion to pass this in the omnibus. Um, hearing no objections, so ordered. I also want to give a shout out. Today is Jamila McMillan's last day here.
Who is that? Oh. Oh, Jamila.
So thank you, Jamila, for your, um, your work and your commitment to this body and to the city of Chicago. And we congratulate you on your years of service and, um, we look forward, um, to your continuous work and your new capacity and congratulations on all the wonderful things that have happened since I've been in office. Um, several celebrations. So one more time for Jamila.
I'm going to need your back, Jamila. What did I say?
So hearing no objections, again, so ordered. Um, and then before, uh, the omnibus, yes, thank you, the omnibus, Alderman Mitchell.
I move that matters in the omnibus be passed by the first most favorable roll call vote by the Committee on Public Safety and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Uh, and before we adjourn, um, I know you all were enjoying, uh, the musical selection this morning in celebration of, um, Alderwoman Harris's birthday. Um, I have the last and final copy of our Vice Mayor's, um, album that he recorded back in.
Are we serious?
Yes, yes.
Are we serious?
This is, it's two thousand and one, and so I just want you to know on behalf of the Vice Mayor, to all of you sucker MCs, um, the Vice Mayor, please do not raise your hand, sucker MCs. Uh, this is a celebration of our wonderful Vice Mayor. Um, and if you want this last and final copy, you're going to have to fight me over it. Al, okay, Alderman Vasquez, don't.
One MC left in council right now. Any day of the week.
All right, fair enough. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to adjourn.
Now I see why Vice Mayor wore his ascot today. There, there being no further business before this body, I move that we adjourn.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Mr. DJ.